I call the meeting to order. In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. You can watch it on our YouTube channel as well. A review of public comments. The first public comment is limited to agenda items only, and the second public comment is anything that you want to comment on. The presentations are just that, presentations, and if you have a comment, you will have to wait until the second public comment. And public comments are limited to 10 minutes. And the chair's report is, "Welcome to Mr. Laten-" Wait, can you please say it properly?
Leighton.
Leighton. Okay. Our newest member, and Carol, our other newest member, is on vacation. And today is our reorganization meeting, so we will be doing that in a few moments. Public comment on agenda items. Does anyone have a comment on agenda items? Yes, yeah. So come, just state your name and address.
Hey, Laura Berdowski, 21 Francis Ave. I wanted to talk about the facilities used to be, and I was going to ask if you would consider waiving fees for the primary Girl Scouts. My daughter is actually aging out of that. My oldest is a Brownian, she'll be in the third grade, but now I've got a kindergartner coming in, and I'm going to be typical leader too. And the thought of getting all those kindergartners after school with different meeting space is terrifying to me. As far as the car seats go and the organization, like the second graders, we've been doing it this year, it didn't go great, but it's working. But as far as car seats, and some of them are still in the five-point harnesses, so, yeah, it would be really great if we could meet at the primary school after school. It works really well. The girls, when they're that young, it's just better if they can stay at the school. And so I would just want to ask if you consider waiving the fees for Girl Scouts for the primary school.
It's just public comment.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Good evening. Peter Beermore, 282 Pleasant Street, Lunenburg. Congratulations, Mr. McCenna.
Thank you.
I'm here to comment on the proposed athletics fee adjustment proposal. This is the general one, not the one that is specific to the middle school. First of all, I want to thank the school department superintendent for distributing this proposal in advance for the entire town to take a look at. I think that is a step in the right direction, so thank you. I don't have a strong opinion. I definitely would like more information relative to the late registration fee, but with respect to the entire proposal, particularly both parts, I want to encourage you to take a skeptical eye toward the whole thing and ask the hard questions here, really centered around, are we affecting positive outcomes for students and families, or are we making things more convenient for the athletic director and raising revenue? I'd like to ask, number one, why is the timeline what it is relative to the late fee? What are some of the things that students and their families need to consider to participate in a sport, such as how is the student feeling leading up to the end of the season prior to that? What is the student's grades? What is the financial situation of the student and the family? These are things that oftentimes take a while to consider leading up to the beginning of the sports season, and could have some effect on why students are waiting until the last minute to decide whether to try out and register for a sport or not. And are we dissuading? Are we preventing potentially students from registering? Specific to the fees for students on reduced lunch, a free and public education in Lunenburg is not free. We like it to be. Next year, I'm going to keep a log every time I open my wallet for my fifth grader and high school senior. There's plenty of opportunity to contribute. And for students that are not of adequate financial needs, which includes students who are on reduced lunch, it's a sliding scale, but if you are on a reduced lunch, federal guidelines, in a family of four, is a taxable income of less than $48,000 a year. That's before federal income tax, which is means-tested, before state income tax, which is not, before social security taxes, which are not, before Medicare taxes, which are not, before property taxes, which are not means-tested. So there's a substantial financial burden on families that are operating at that income level, and why in the world would we be raising fees for those students and preventing them potentially from the opportunity to participate in sports? So I'd ask you to have a real critical eye on that proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCenna.
Pauline Murray, 105 Chestnut. I have four children in the school, actually, one kid in every single school this year. I'm coming before you on the middle school athletic proposal. I just see this as a really big jump. We're currently, I think, they're either $50 or $60, and $200 is quadrupling the D. And I would like to see a lot more substantiation for why that raise is there and what we're going to be getting that would change, and why that's necessary. I did look at what some of the fees are in some of the other neighboring school districts for middle school. Air Shirley is $100 per year, doesn't matter how many sports, how many seasons. North Millisack is $100 per season. Nor- the Shelby Regional is $55 per season. Quavon was the most expensive I could find at $120 per season. Again, this is just what I was able to find online. Again, nowhere near $200. And I think that if we're charging $200, which is close to what we're charging for high school, there's going to be an expectation there with the parents that, what are we getting for that $200? Is it high school level? And then my question would be, do we have the coaches and field space and stuff to accommodate, you know, if we're paying that rate, we're getting to high school, who gets the primary? Because I know a lot of times, middle school gets knocked off right now. So those would be my concerns. And then one more thing would just be that they're not allowing, there's no cap per family, and there's also no continuity between high school and middle school. So next year, I don't have middle school, but the following year, I would be looking at these if my kids do three sports for $1,800. We're, you know, of the financial bracket that we're not qualifying for free or reduced lunch, but we're also not independently wealthy, and, you know, almost $1,800 for a year, not including all the equipment and other things that we need to buy to support that. That's a lot. That's a huge financial burden, and I would hate to see kids and parents having to make the decision that the kids can't do sports because they can't afford it.
Maureen Bujeko, 14 Charlton Street. I'm here also to talk about the middle school fees. As a parent and a coach, I'm coaching middle school track right now. So as a parent, I feel it is a big jump from $50 to $200. So that, from the parent perspective, I think, as Pauline said, quadrupling the prices a lot. From the coaches' standpoint, I have a few points I just wanted to make aware to you. Coaches pay, in my opinion, should be at least at minimum wage, which currently does not work out to be minimum wage. I also feel that for students, families paying $200 per family, students should be getting $200 worth out of the program. As Pauline mentioned, more than half of our middle school track season, we've asked the kids to head down to their warm-up lap, and gotten down to the track and found that we are not able to use the track. And when you're coaching a track team, it's really hard to not have a track to use. Kids can run on grass, but you can't practice handoffs for relays without those painted zones that you're using. You can't practice long jump or high jump without that equipment. It's very difficult to practice and teach kids how to use the starting line, how to hurdle when you don't have access to that equipment. I would equate it to asking a swim team to practice outside of a pool. So if families are being asked to pay $200, we need to be on the track. We don't need to be up on the grass, running on the grass. The other thing I'd like to say, from a coaches' standpoint, I think that the rates and fees would help with bus fees. We had one away meet this year, and unfortunately, it was really difficult for the kids. They had a lot of difficulty just getting used to that different track. They had had three meets at our track. So I think it would be really important to raise the fee so we could go to other tracks. We have states June 1st, and our team has been to one other track. So it may be difficult for them to do that. The track, the one track we did go to, had a different type of a long jump pit. It had a different type of a board. Lots of kids tripped up over that, and we had a lot of fouls. I just wanted to just also say that, that all of the things that, you know, the other piece to that about the number of students per coaches, when you're coaching track, you're coaching handoffs, you're coaching starts and hurdles, you have long jump, high jump, chocolate disc, and sometimes we work on turbo jav. So you do need more people. I think the money would help with more people, because we do have a lot to teach them. I just also just feel it's really important to have, I'm not sure who's in charge, the school committee superintendent, athletic director, to work really hard that if we are proposing middle school sports and higher fees, that those kids do have access to the basketball team, to the gym, the track team, to the track, field hockey, to an appropriate line to be built. And also, I just wanted to say that I am in favor of the late fee that was spoken about before as well. It was difficult for us to really track down the kids at the beginning that did not have their fees paid, and that took up a lot of practice time for the first couple weeks of practice to figure that out. So if there was a late fee, I think that would be helpful from a coaches' standpoint. Thank you.
We have warrants on the table to approve and line item transfers.
Yes, we have.
Oh, we have already done our 10 minutes. Yeah. Yeah.
So we have two requests this evening. One from the high school to move funds from the music supply line into music travel. And this was really to cover the cost of a bus for them to travel to a competition. And then we have a request from Ms. Delanda with multiple lines, looking to transfer $1,752 from the telephone maintenance line, $1,571 from the electricity line, $570 from the telephone system line, $500 from the fuel oil line, $199 from the emergency expenditure, for a total of $4,592. And that money would be moved to the custodial supplies and the building, the maintenance and building supply lines. The transfer of the funds will be used to fund custodial supplies for the last few weeks of school and to replace light fixture lens for the Turkey Hill Elementary School. And Ms. Delanda feels that sufficient funds remain in the lines being transferred out of to meet the department needs. So I would recommend both. Ms. Delanda is here this evening if you have questions about the transfer.
Do you have any questions?
No.
No?
No. I'll, I move to accept line item transfer in the amount of $839.25 from music supplies to music travel in one, and the line item transfer totaling $4,592 as outlined by the superintendent. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have minutes to approve from April 24th and May 1st. Did you look at those?
Yes.
Do you have them?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, yes, yes.
Do you have any, did you have any questions or concerns that?
I did not.
No.
One question I had was, is in the April 24th superintendent's report, there was mention of a preschool letter of clarification. I was wondering if that had been sent out.
It hasn't been sent out yet. We did have a meeting to discuss the current enrollment for the pre-K class. As soon as we can make an adjustment, and if we can determine that there are additional seats that we can open to our typical peers, we'll put that out in the letter with the clarification relative to the adjustment.
Thank you.
So they're just, they're just looking to monitor for a few more weeks to see what happens with some of the students that are sort of in the queue right now.
So I'll move to accept the minutes from April 24th, 2019, and May 1st, 2019. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Superintendent's report.
So first, on the report tonight, I would like to make an introduction. This evening, we have Mrs. Christina Gerton, who will become the new principal at Lunenburg Primary School. I'd like to ask her to come sit at the table.
Hi. Hello, welcome.
Mrs. Gerton comes to us with more than 20 years' experience as an assistant, well, this is through 20 years, as an assistant principal in the Worcester Public Schools. She has spent her entire career working for the Worcester Public Schools, and she began her career as a head start teacher in Worcester. And she has also been a teacher of the K through 3 grades. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in Early Childhood Education from Worcester State College and a Master of Counseling from Anna Maria College. She will officially begin the role in July, July 1st. However, she has begun to spend some time in the district. She attended the pre-K orientation last evening, and she'll have an opportunity to coordinate with Mr. McKenna on the Year Two grant proposal for the literacy grant. We've learned that that grant will continue for us next year, so the two will collaborate on writing a proposal for next year. And we'll also be working out some opportunities for her to come spend a little bit of time at the primary before the end of the year. So in addition to the transition support that she'll receive from Mr. McKenna and Mr. Adams, she'll also have the support of the entire leadership team. And she will also have a dedicated mentor. The mentor will be Dr. Curtis Bates, a retired principal and superintendent. He actually was the consultant who worked with the primary staff earlier in the year, doing some work on school culture. So I think she's got all the right supports to have a successful brochure with us. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No questions, just welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. All right. So an update on the 2019-2020 school calendar. We caught some omissions. In my work with the professional development committee, we went to verify the date of our November full-day PD day, and we looked at the calendar, and it wasn't noted. So we know that we did talk about the fact that we would have the November election day as the full-day PD day in November, but it wasn't noted on that calendar. So we're suggesting some minor edits. We will shade the November 5th day on the calendar so that all the parents and staff know that that is a no-school day. Additionally, when we went to go make that correction, Liz actually caught the fact that there isn't August 30th, it's a Monday, and it would be a solo block on the August calendar, and it was inadvertently left off. So we added the August 30th day, and then we made the adjustment. On the school calendars, at the bottom of each month, you see a total number of days in school. So in August, we had to add a day, and in November, we had to subtract a day. These changes, however, make no, there's no impact to the start date and the end date for the 2019-2020 school year. So I just wanted to make you aware that-
So this one in our packet is updated?
Yes.
And this was after we painstakingly counted them all?
I know, yeah.
Exactly.
In a meeting?
In a meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have to approve it again?
No, I think we're all set. I just wanted to make you aware that there are some corrections that are going to be made, and we'll post and distribute the calendar. We'll push it out as an email notice to all of the families. We'll also push it out as an email notice to the staff, just so that everybody knows that that was missing.
I almost feel better if we did approve it, since we approved it the first time, and if we're making adjustments.
We'll approve the adjustments.
While it's not substantial, but we're adding and taking away a day.
Okay.
It almost makes sense to me that we would-
I'll make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 school calendar with the changes as outlined by Dr. Burnham this evening.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And Dr. Burnham, that, what I had said is different here. I don't know if-
Just for the record?
Well, it's correct here.
Okay.
So it's been edited. All good. Yes, it was, I think, part of the edit, so we're good.
All right. So next, on the update, I have an update for you on the 2019-2020 school choice. We currently have eight grade nine students who have confirmed that they will be accepting a seat. We have four students who applied but now have declined a seat. One of those four was a grade 10 student. And we're waiting to receive a response from two additional students, one of whom is a grade 10. So if that, if that one that we're waiting for comes in, we will potentially have one grade 10 student and nine grade nine students pending confirmation from those two families.
Okay.
I wanted to provide an update on kindergarten registration. Currently, we are still at 107 registrations for kindergarten. And I wanted to provide you an extended day update. I held a parent forum Wednesday evening, May 15th, to hear parents' concerns regarding changes to the extended day program. It was very good discussion, I thought, and the discussion lasted more than two hours. And I shared a summary of the forum discussion with all parents. We pushed that out to all parents at the primary in the Turkey Hill by email, knowing that there are some parents who can't make an evening meeting, and we didn't want to leave them out of the loop. I've met with the team, and we're looking at the feasibility of a short-stay option. That would be something an hour or less, and it really does boil down to my ability to staff that option. So I'm following up on some of that. I'm hoping to work out some of the details, and if, in fact, I can staff, I hope to have something more formal to offer you at the next meeting, June 5th. And I will also put the proposal out to the primary and the Turkey Hill parents, again, via email, so that they can review it prior to June 5th.
Okay.
And we also have a grant award. Lunenburg Public Schools has been awarded a comprehensive schools health service grant through the Mass Department of Public Health in the amount of $3,000. The grant is designed and will be used for professional development for nurses, as well as resources for the improvement of health services for Lunenburg Public Schools. And last, well, yeah, we've got, I've got a request, actually. School improvement plans. Typically, principals present their school improvement plans in June, and I'm requesting consideration of having the school improvement plans presented either as a draft in June or having them presented at the first meeting in October. Either of these options would allow me to work with the leadership team this summer on the development of the strategy for improvement. That's the next phase that comes after the entry findings report. Delaying the final approval of the school improvement plans will allow me to work with them through the summer and allow them to meet with their school councils in September, should they want to make any adjustments with their school council to their school improvement plan to better align with the strategy that is developed. So you potentially have three options. The principals present, and you approve the school improvement plans in June, as with past practice. Principals can present a draft in June and return with a final version in the fall for approval. Or principals can present and approve in the fall.
I'd kind of like to see a draft in June.
June?
And the final approval, with any changes outlined.
Okay.
And we don't necessarily, I don't know that we necessarily did have a-
Presentation.
That's what I was thinking. Something brief in June.
But something that we can-
So just in your packet, that you can review?
Yes.
A draft?
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay. Yes.
And then, or maybe just have them available that night if we have questions.
Okay.
So we don't have to actually do a presentation, I would think.
That's the retirement one?
Yes.
That's the retirement?
Yeah, okay.
And that would be part of the first, right, new business?
Okay. And lastly, we have some proposals in the works for some summer sports clinics, and I hope to have some additional information for you, and we'll put that on the agenda for the June 5th meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay. And we don't have a student rep report because there is a lacrosse game right now, and she is playing. Do we know?
She's graduating.
And she's graduating.
She had her last meeting.
She had her last meeting.
Heather, can I comment?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to thank the administration for looking for grants and always searching for grants. I think it's really important to get the extra resources, outside resources. Thank you.
Yeah, we search for everything that we, that we can. We write a proposal for anything that comes our way that, that we think the parameters of the grant fit something that we also need. Grants always come with guidelines as to what the money can be spent on, and, you know, sometimes you might become aware of a grant that would fund something that we don't need. Or it might be limited to larger cities, as an example, and we wouldn't have a population large enough to apply for a grant. But the team does a really good job of following through with grant proposals on anything that we think supports the work that we're doing, that we would be eligible for.
In regards to the student rep, do we have a new one?
Has not been named yet. My understanding-
I can see here right then.
I don't have the name for it, but I can give you-
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Oh, reorganization. Where's that list? It's in here, right?
It is.
Is it in here or the end?
I printed it out.
Do you? Did you? Well, I'm just trying to find it.
It's down, it's-
It's at the bottom?
Bottom, yeah. He's got it here.
Me, it's easier to print those ones out.
There you go. Okay.
Try to be careful.
Okay. So I need a nomination.
Well, actually, you're supposed to be doing this.
I was going to say, not me.
Take a motion for a nomination?
Nominate Heather Shroka to continue as chair. I think she's done a great job this year.
Thank you. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, now I can run it?
Yes, you can.
Okay. You probably should have been doing, okay. Vice chairpersons. I need a nomination. I can't make a nomination.
You can't?
I don't think so. I would nominate Wendy Bertrand to continue as vice-chairperson.
Does Wendy want to continue as a vice-chairperson?
I would.
Then I will check in that nomination.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Secretary. Brian. Usually, that goes to low man on the totem pole.
I was just about to say Brian.
With Carol absent today.
Oh.
I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding. I'm taking nominations.
You're never absent for the reorg meeting.
Um, well-
And what's entailed in the, in the, in- What's entailed in the, in the, in the secretary is just taking notes during executive sessions.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And then getting them to central offices-
Yes, so that they can be reviewed, yeah.
So I will nominate Brian as our secretary.
Okay. You second in that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And you're, and you're okay with that?
I agree, all member.
You're a member. Carol is a member. Our, we have to approve to continue, to continue all, continue all existing policies in effect for the ensuing year ahead.
I make a move to approve all the existing policies in effect for the ensuing year. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need a motion to approve to authorize student activity funds for the following amounts. Primary school, $2,000. Turkey Hill Elementary School, $2,000. Lunenburg Middle School, $5,000. Lunenburg High School, $10,000. Um, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, this doesn't-
Not at all. All good. Okay, approve a waiver to allow food and beverages with lids in the Lunenburg Middle High School auditorium for annual town meeting. Are we tabling that?
I was just gonna say.
Is that a discussion item?
We put it on the agenda so that you could have some discussion about, about that. So-
Could we move that up?
Table it, or you want to just move the discussion?
Let's move the discussion off, I would think, if we're here.
Okay.
We need a motion to move that?
It's on the agenda.
Yes.
So we need a motion to, to move it, to discuss it now, yeah. No, we're, do you want to discuss it now or later?
So it's under the action item-
Out of order. We're gonna take it out of order.
Which is under 9C.
You want to take that out of order?
Yes, we're gonna take it out of order.
Okay.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve action item 9C, town item meetings.
Out of order.
Out of order.
Second.
We're approving?
We're moving it out of order.
Moving it, so we can talk about it now.
Then yes, I'll second moving it out of order for discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So Mr. Londa is here this evening. He can provide a little bit of an update for you as to the cleanup.
From the last town meeting, please?
From the last town meeting.
Good evening, Tom Londa. So, clear up following the last town meeting. We did have some, you know, some lunches, lunch bags and some trash that was left behind in the auditorium following a certain improvement that was brought into the auditorium. We did have a spill of coffee. Unfortunately, it did not end up on our rug, and we looked at it easily and cleaned up. And, you know, as the general, the general rule for high school, for high school students, we're not allowed to bring food back in the auditorium. We did have audio of the town meeting going in the cafeteria during the town meeting. So it was possible to explain to people what was going on and potentially return to the auditorium for the care of the auditorium. We have lots of carpet and lots of fabric. Long term, trying to avoid soil that you leave those to would be great because we really don't, we're not really staffed to the level to be able to clean 600 seats or all the square footage. We do clean the carpet, but the seats are a bit of a challenge.
I did have a conversation with Mr. Malandinos, the IT director, about the possibility of actually simulcasting the meeting, so that not only audio, but we have some screens in the cafeteria. And he thought that it was doable to, to do that. He'd have to work with public access to figure out what needs to be installed for that to actually happen, or how things need to be connected to, to have that happen. So there is a possibility that you could actually broadcast the meeting outside of the auditorium and potentially limit food and drink in the auditorium, other than water.
With lid? That's what it says. Would we have beverages with a lid, or would we just say no to all beverages with a lid? That's not water. What are you, what are you?
Discussion.
I, I know, it seems like a petty thing.
I know.
We have spent millions on this school, and I'd hate to see it. Accidents happen. I tell my kids, "Don't eat on the couch. If you spill, I'm gonna be really ticked off. If I spill, I'm ticked off at me and I'm not yelling." Right? So, and I, I understand we're all adults that are there, and, but accidents happen. And I'd hate to see the, the wear and tear effect, the building, that we're trying to keep in good condition, thanks to Mr. Londa and his crew. That said, I'd be, I'd be happy with water with a lid. If we can broadcast outside of the room, even if we set up maybe tables in the hallway to eat your lunch, just so it's, if the food is just easier to clean on linoleum or the tile, not the carpet. Or the chairs.
Or the seats.
Right. So I'd, I'd be good with that kind of an option.
I think that we should be held to the same standards as the students who attend the school every day, and they're not allowed to go in there with food or drink during the day.
And that same notices up when we have performances in, in the auditorium as, as well.
And for some historical context, this happened because of the length of town meeting, traditionally. I mean, this is, it's not, when our students are in there, it's an hour, I mean, maybe two hours max for something.
Ten hours per level.
Same thing for a performance.
Well, hopefully, we won't.
Ten hours and 40 minutes is not, you know, does not happen for them. So I think some sort of compromise to have the simulcast, and, and also so that those running and moderating the meeting are aware.
Well, I think a lunch break could be taken at town meeting.
Right. I think that trying to hold folks in a room, which then, you know, makes them need to eat or drink something beyond water because the agenda is so large, that's in conflict with, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, which is not to have people eating full-on meals in there.
I think a lot of our citizens want to make sure our school stays new, stays beautiful. We should protect it.
Yeah.
But I think it's important, too. We, we had a fairly unique circumstance with a very, very long-
Right.
-town meeting. And I understand the need, and that was the, the comment that was brought to the, to my attention first thing in the morning, that there would be no breaks. People need to have food. So food had to be allowed in to the auditorium. Not wishing to delay the start of what we all anticipated would be a very long meeting by having discussion with the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and so on. I agreed, based on the unique circumstances of this particular meeting. However, I didn't feel really great about it. And that's why I think it's important, whatever dialogue we have and whatever decision is made, I, I think it would be beneficial to send written notice from the committee to the Board of Selectmen, to the Finance Committee, to the Town Manager, with your decision. Town moderator, so that everybody is aware, and if there's, if there's more discussion warranted, perhaps at a joint meeting, that we could have more discussion about it. I, I think that if there are gonna be breaks, maybe the exception might be that the members of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee be allowed to have food in the auditorium. But they are also situated on-
Stage.
On a stage and on a, a floor surface- Below the stage that could be easily cleaned. It's the same as out in the hallway. So I think perhaps that could be an exception if there's gonna be a really lengthy meeting. But I think, I think there's a, a workable solution where we can broadcast outside, set tables outside, and people can listen, and if there's a, if there's conversation, they're not missing it. And if there's a vote called, they, they can return to be counted for the vote. I think it's a win-win to extend the life of the auditorium that we have currently without having to do renovations to replace worn carpet, worn upholstery, and such.
Yeah, I think to Mr. Londa's point, the, getting the, the upholstery and the chairs is a lot harder than running a carpet cleaner. But still, it's wear and tear that would not be necessary.
So...
So, um...
I will-
We're, we're not gonna allow food.
Hmm?
We're not allowing food in the auditorium.
I would like to make a motion to approve a waiver to allow water with lids in the auditorium for annual town meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Can we get-
Did I get a report back to you? If Mr. Malandinos works with the cable folks and, and we find out that we aren't able to simulcast with video the meeting, and we can only do an audio, I'll come back and let you know where we're at with that, and if, if you wanna-
We could always bring it back for discussion before the next meeting, if we, if we needed to, but-
Right. So annual town meeting is, is in May.
I was gonna say, it's a year away, so.
And, so the topic will come up, no doubt, if we, if there is a special town meeting called this fall.
Yeah.
I, since the topic for the new businesses town meeting items, I think we're safe talking about special town meetings as well.
Special town meeting tends to be a shorter duration anyway, that typically there are not as many articles.
Although, my recollection, I could be wrong. I thought that there might have been baked goods for sale outside of the special town meeting in the fall?
There were baked goods for sale. Would have been.
I think you're right.
I, well, my, my thought in saying is that, that annual town meeting or special town meeting, particularly since a special town meeting would, in all likelihood, be significantly shorter, that water with lids should be sufficient for, for that event as well.
No, but I think you were just talking about the fact that special town meeting is not actually on the agenda.
Well, right, special town meeting is not called out as a special town meeting, but it's, it is a town meeting.
Right.
And it doesn't say annual town meeting.
It doesn't say annual town meeting.
That's what he's-
The, the org chart, piece of paper, says annual town meeting.
Right.
Don't, and I think the motion was for annual town meeting.
It was, so we can-
We're just leaving it at that.
I can amend the motion.
No, we're just gonna leave it at that.
We're leaving it to annual town meeting and deal with specials separately?
Yeah.
As a different topic later?
Yeah, because it's not on the agenda. It's not on the-
Alright, so-
Are we, we don't even know we're having a special town meeting this year, too.
Well, but, we don't know that.
No.
So, we can take it up when, when and if a special town meeting is called.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We need to pre-arrange to do that.
Okay.
We add it to topics for future discussion?
Yeah. Okay, continuing with appointments for committees. Voting delegate and legislative representative, usually the chair, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, do we need, oh, yes, I need a motion for that still, though.
I'll move to make Heather the official voting delegate to Massachusetts Association of School Committees, as well as legislative representative for school committees. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then the spokesperson? Oh, that's also.
That's you.
Yeah. Good, I'm gonna give away other jobs. I need another motion. Sorry, Jim.
Because it's in our-
Oh, you know what? Let's make a motion at the very end. We'll approve all of them at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, that works. Okay, that works. Policy development?
I am interested in joining that.
Yes, Jim. And Wendy, did you still want to be on that? I do. Wendy. Brian.
Motion that Jim will add?
No, we're gonna approve it all at the end.
Oh.
We're gonna wait. Yeah, we'll take up less time.
So anybody else?
Anybody, are you interested in that, Brian?
No, thank you.
No, okay, thanks. No, thank you, that was nice. And administrators in advisory capacity is just as it was before, previously, correct?
Yeah, what changes-
So Christina.
Oh, Christina Gern. Okay, so it's Rob McGrath, Tim Santry, Heidi Champagne, Christine Gern, Juliana Hanscom, John Londa, Michael Cassidy, Steve Malandinos, and James Bonnell. Okay. Sick leave bank. We need a replacement for Ms. Weiss.
I am interested.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Superintendent of Schools, oh, Dr. Burnham. Executive Board Member to FLAC Collaborative is also Dr. Burnham. Finance Committee Rep, Carol did say that she still wanted to continue with that. Does anyone else have interest in that?
No, I think Carol did a great job last year on that.
Yeah. Okay, we'll keep Carol. Is anyone interested in capital planning? I will still do it, but if anyone else is interested.
Yeah, I'm wondering what, how often they meet and-
In the winter, it's every other week on a Tuesday.
At five, correct?
At five, yeah.
That could interfere with my APDC. They meet in the fall?
They start in, well, November.
Okay, I'm interested.
Okay. And you can get there by that time, right?
I mentioned too, but I don't know.
Right. You can, it's five?
Yeah, yeah, the fall's just a challenge.
Maybe would Jim be an alternate? That way, if Brian was unable to go-
I'd want to be an alternate.
Okay. But those are kind of hard to have an alternate. They, yeah, because they do presentations.
They do, but at least could provide an update.
Yeah, not really. That's not really that kind of committee. Okay.
Okay.
Just, it, it just wouldn't work out that well for that kind of committee. It's, it's not the same kind of updates, and it's a lot of data and numbers.
Okay.
Okay. Did you really, did you want to join, Jim?
No, I, it, the, the topic is interesting, but-
Well, it gives you a big town picture.
Yes.
It's really informative in that perspective. I'm, I don't know, I did not watch the reorg last night. Do we know who's the selectman?
The board of selectmen?
Yeah.
Tom Alanto is the chair.
No, but I mean, did they do their committees?
They did do committees last night, and I've-
Was it Damon still?
I guess, I don't remember.
Okay.
I think it was still Damon.
Was it still Damon? Okay.
I think so.
Yeah? Okay. You, you can go to the meeting.
Well, like I said-
They're open meetings.
Right, but, you know, my only concern is that the other-
Right.
Committee that I sit on-
Right.
Meets on Tuesdays.
Oh, okay.
So that may not be a, a good option.
Well, what time does it meet?
Seven.
We're always done before selectmen.
Always, okay.
Always. Cause the selectmen have to go to the selectmen's meeting.
I can take it to the hallway and-
Well, well, you guys have to do-
So we'll, we'll, let's come back to that.
Okay.
See how everything else shakes out.
Okay.
See who, who might be a little overloaded.
Yeah. Wellness advisory? Wendy, do you still want that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Does anyone else want?
Right.
I think you've been, you did a great job with the, all the survey.
Okay. PTO? I can do that. If I'm giving them capital, I can do PTO.
You're gonna do PTO?
Yeah, I'll do PTO. Pacsal?
Do you need an alternate?
Do you want to be the alternate still? We can give that to Carol.
Yeah, I can do the alternate still.
Okay, Jim, okay. Pacsal, did you, did you have, never met?
Last year, I don't even know who I would be in contact with, or who would be in contact with me. It's been two years and I haven't-
Yeah, yeah, I thought that, did they just-
They have meetings.
It's regional, right?
Yeah. We could get the dates for you from Juliana Hanscom.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can, I can do it. Yeah, you can keep me.
Okay. Okay. High school, the school council representatives. We had Meredith at the high school, Jim at the middle school, I was not Turkey Hill, that was Carol, and primary school was Wendy.
I'm fine staying on middle school, since I don't have any kids in middle school.
Okay.
I just didn't want to do high school.
Okay. I think Carol said she would stay as Turkey Hill.
Yeah, Brian would do...
Brian, do you want to do primary? Do you have interest in that?
They're typically a little bit, like, you know, obviously they'll change, but obviously it's after the school day ends there and they get out later than say, you know, because just for some folks, you know, making like a three o'clock meeting at the high school.
It's like 4:15-ish?
They were 4:15.
Okay. And then it gets you familiar with what goes on over at the primary school.
Who is doing high school now?
I'll do the high school. Athletic advisory, Jim.
Brian has a preference.
I know, I know.
I've been doing it since inception.
I know.
I think it's time to bring some new blood and new energy and new ideas to the table, working with James.
Okay, you're going to take on a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so...
That's once a month, okay, so let's just talk about...
If you still want capital, Brian.
Right, okay, he'll take capital?
I'll take capital.
Okay, well, that was easy.
It's in the hallway.
Right, not, okay. Diversity, do we have that anymore?
We closed that out.
We closed that out, that's done. Lifelong learning, do we have that?
We went on hiatus for that. I am certainly happy to hang on to it if it picks back up at all.
Okay, charter review, done.
Done.
Blues or bags, that's coming up later.
Correct, on the agenda tonight.
So we, we don't need a rep though, right? Right now? Okay. Okay. I need a slate approval.
Motion to approve all the appointees for the 2019-2020 committees as outlined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done. Okay, new business, personnel report, Mr. Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. I want to report out to you that we've had three retirements at the primary school, two teachers, and our school secretary is retiring at the end of the year. Just want to report out to you that between the two teachers, 66 years of teaching service in Lunenburg.
Can you tell us who they are, is that public?
Of course.
Okay, just for everyone, yeah. Okay.
Both of whom are retiring at the end of the year. And Denise Galman, the school secretary, is retiring. She sat 23 years in the district. She did a number of jobs before she became the secretary, but combined with about 23 years. So valued employees, and was given a lot of time out to this town, so we really do appreciate her service. While I have a moment, I'm trying to, obviously I want you to accept this, this report for the record, but I would like to give you an update. We've been posting positions. After the town meeting, we posted some of the open positions, parent positions, teaching positions that we're aware of have been posted. Fall coaches were posted last week, and it seems, we're still in the spring season, but we're just getting those coaches lined up. And we anticipate posting the advisors and the other stipend positions next week, no later than the end of next week. So I just wanted to report that out.
Okay.
So if you could accept...
We got to accept his update, his personnel update.
I make a motion to accept the personnel update as outlined by Mr. Cassidy. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. With thanks to our retirees, I...
That's a long time.
A long time.
Well, we can, anyone can come and thank them at our next meeting.
Yes.
They'll be there.
Retirees will be there at the next meeting.
June 5th, that town hall, 6:30 reception?
Yes.
6:30?
Snacks?
6:30?
It's not early, snacks, snacks, right?
Yes. Yes, I don't know that we can compete with the finance committee cookies, but...
We probably can't compete with finance committee, but...
Listen, I don't know if we can compete with the tea set that she used to break out before. School handbooks.
I'd like to invite all of the principals to the table, we'll have to maybe slide a few...
Squeeze, squish, squish together.
Wish I had that on camera.
That's an angle that I would not want my face beside.
So, many of the updates, we're strictly formatting sorts of changes that you might have noted. Language updates were primarily to reflect language changes connected to policy changes around discrimination, around canine search. And we made sure that all of the handbooks had the most updated mission and vision statement included. I think that's kind of a broad statement that applies across the board to all, all of the handbooks, but you may have questions on specific handbooks?
No, just from a broad statement, I appreciated the addition of the non-discrimination policy. I would prefer that we use the language that was approved by the school committee.
The policy.
In 5402. There were some inconsistencies in the language, just for consistency's sake. But I appreciate that that was added to the high school, I didn't, don't recall seeing it on the other, the other ones, but I think it's important to include on all of the handbooks.
I see it...
Did you see it on?
I'm looking at the...
It's on the high school, I don't remember seeing it on the other ones. I may have missed it.
It's in the primary.
Oh, it's in the primary.
It's early in the primary.
So one of the things that I've been talking with Liz about is forming a small handbook committee, so that we can look at all of the handbooks from a district-wide lens as a, as a small team to bring alignment and consistency to the formatting, to the placement of certain pieces of information. Of course, there will be things that are unique to each school that also need to be included, but if we could align the organization of the handbook and make sure that all of the language aligns as well, I think that would be a vast improvement for parents.
Well, because it looks like the policy is taken from Massachusetts General Law, but we also in 5402 added things like real or perceived.
Yes, we did.
Characteristics, gender, identity, or expression, things like that, that were a little more inclusive than what's in the NGL.
Well, and we could reference our policy like we did with the dog and the police department. Because we referenced...
Cars in the parking lot as well.
Yeah.
That cars are subject to search as well.
So just that you all know, the language that's in the handbook was provided from legal counsel.
The dog one?
Yes.
But it also refers to our policy number. So the other one could refer to our policy number?
Yep.
For the language.
That works.
So that's consistent, right, Jim? Yeah. Okay. Do you have any questions for any of the principals who've sat here for... Anybody? There weren't major changes.
No, there weren't major changes.
Not at all.
You know, based on the reorg, obviously, the...
Oh, the change...
The school committee pieces that need to change.
They might need to be updated.
Advisory council names, but those are minor.
Additionally, I had mentioned that we're working on a possible option relative to the extended day change. If another option is viable and comes forward and is approved, we would come back and include that information in the Turkey Hill and the primary handbooks as well.
Okay.
Yeah, as I recall, last year there were some larger changes, and so it's nice to see that this year didn't require as much.
Right. I liked how it was highlighted so that we could see them.
We could see what was different.
Right away. Okay, I don't think we have any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks for your attendance. Okay. Let me find the first, policy 505, 1505. Let me find it. Oh, no, it's not, it's just a deletion of a policy.
I have a problem deleting that.
Well, you can take it back to policy. At your next policy meeting.
Well, I would, okay, so for those of you to follow along, this is the community involvement in decision-making, where we're basically striking the policy that says, "School committee endorses the concept of community participation, and the affairs of schools is essential to the school department, and community are to maintain mutual confidence and respect to work together." To me, striking this as a policy...
It's not a policy, though, we didn't read it as a policy, it's just a bold statement.
Correct, that's why...
You know what I'm saying?
That was the...
It doesn't fall under a policy category as opposed to, it is a statement we agree with.
The right of the citizen to read and make recommendations to the school committee regarding improving Lunenburg schools. That, to me, is a policy.
How is it a policy?
That we are, we affirm the right of the town to speak up? Is that not a policy of ours, that we are open to getting feedback?
Yeah, that's...
And so, the perception here is that we're striking a policy on community relations in our handbook.
No, this is a policy, yeah.
Right, in the policy, specifically around community involvement and communication with the school committee, when our focus has been increasing community involvement and participation and communication. So, I'm getting a completely different...
See, but I don't read it as a policy, like, I don't think that is a policy person, like, it's weirdly, it's oddly written, but you, listen, I'm not on policy anymore. So, if you don't, we don't have to have a first reading, you guys can take it back to your next policy meeting and look at it again. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right.
I agree with Jim, I think it sets the wrong tone to the community that we do want them to be more involved, and I think removing it just sends the wrong message.
So I think that maybe you should work on, or think about, language?
In terms of a policy.
A policy language as opposed to a statement, kind of, because it's...
The last sentence is kind of the policies that we reaffirm your...
Right, but the other part, the other piece is just...
Background, yeah. Well, many of our other policies say, "We do this and this and this," you know.
Right.
So, but yeah, we'll go back and review this, thank you.
Okay, all right.
I saw that and was a little dismayed.
Okay. Policy meeting. Second readings for, hold on. 1201, community use of school facilities, general rules. Second reading of community relations with, oh, communications with the public, 1104, news media relations, news releases. Second reading of, what is this one? Oh, I hate that.
So this is the renumbering.
It's the renumbering, yeah.
Now, these are all on the website. This is just the second reading of them, and changes are highlighted in red online. The public's right to know, 1105, communications, all the communications with the publics. And our third reading is the final reading for them, which will take place at the next meeting for approval. So if you have any comments on the policies that you would like to send us, please do so before the next meeting. All of them can be found on the website under the school committee section.
Yes.
Yeah. So I just, do you have any questions?
I just have, I guess, a question for the superintendent on 1201. The language crosses off building principal to replace with the superintendent, but the school equipment will not be available to outside organizations except under very special circumstances and willing permission of the superintendent. I didn't know if that was going to be putting more work on you, where the principals would be able to make those decisions.
I think we want to be able to make sure that we're making consistent decisions. Certainly, they would offer a recommendation, but I think for the sake of consistency, I think it makes sense for the superintendent to give the final okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So I just need a motion to waive the second reading?
I will make a motion to waive the second reading of the policies as outlined by the chair.
Second.
So I don't have to read them all again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Donations?
We have two this evening, both from the PTO, both to the Turkey Hill Elementary. As a result of the Scholastic Book Fair, the PTO is donating $522.48 to the Turkey Hill Elementary, and that will be deposited in the school's gift account. And as a result of the Square One Art, $124.69 is being donated to the Turkey Hill Elementary, and it will also be deposited in the gift account, and I would recommend that we accept.
What about the box tops?
Something get dropped into your folder?
Yeah, the box tops. Also to Turkey Hill.
Okay.
You don't have it?
$283.30.
$283.30.
So keep those box tops coming in.
Yeah, okay. We will accept, motion to accept with gratitude.
I'll make a motion to accept all three donations with gratitude from the PTO and Box Tops for Education.
Second, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, middle school athletics proposal, Mr. Benel, where is he? Is he here?
Yeah.
Cross issue?
No, there he is.
There he is.
Hello, everybody?
Hello.
Just to give you an update, girls' lacrosse is tied 13-13.
Oh, my gosh. Yes, please, I want all those updates.
So one of the things, this past spring, Junior Jewel Rivers, our outdoor track, broke his school record in shot put during a 55 feet, which is tremendous.
When was that record set before?
The record was set like four years, some years ago.
Yeah.
That's the future. You know, the cool thing about all these records and things, I want to tell you that all the kids that are doing it are wonderful kids. Declan Fitzpatrick, senior, he's graduated, he's going to play boys' lacrosse at Clark. He passed the 304th milestone in lacrosse, it's a very, very big feat, not a lot of people do that. And today after school, we had a, kind of like a little signing for the 12 seniors that we graduated that will be participating at Division 1, 2, and 3 colleges next year in athletics.
And that could be seen on Twitter?
That can be seen on Twitter. You know, the cool thing about being the athletic director here is I've been able to be known, so wonderful people, those people come from multiple parents, and you can see where the kids get it from, and so we're all a community apart, and putting that information out there is probably the best part of my job, because it's great people in that grade and basically spread. So now, by the way, Middle School Athletics.
Okay, did you want to do your proposal, your description of it, an outline?
So...
We have it.
You have it?
Is it out there, the paperwork is out there? Okay, so...
So when I was first hired, one of the things that was brought to my attention was that Middle School Athletics was removed from public schools at some point, and the district wanted Middle School Athletics back. We went through the budget process, I did try to pull it, I did the budget process, and there were more pertinent things that needed to be installed in the budget than Middle School Athletics at the time. In order to have Middle School Athletics, the proposal that you see in front of you, that is out there, that is what came about, a lot of the information in there. There was a survey sent out to members of that... was a survey sent out to members of Turkey Hill and to the middle school here in this building, of what athletics they were interested in, a fee that parents would be willing to pay, and I believe.
I, yeah, I have it right here. Do you want me to tell you?
Yeah.
Okay, would you be willing to pay a user fee of approximately $200? Seventy-six percent of the 238 respondents, 182 said yes. Fifty-six said no.
This survey was sent when?
That was twenty-three percent of the, said no.
In October.
Yes, in October.
In October.
After a gentleman came with a proposal for Middle School Basketball, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So, Middle School Field Hockey, that was already passed, reported, got here this year, the user fee was $200, and the fee basically covers the cost of the program. To say that, if, I had it my way as an athletic director, I have one of the charges. However, it's a necessary fee in order to function as an athletic department. Transportation being your biggest cost, coaching being your second biggest cost, and then all the supplies that comes with it, with officials and things like that. The $200 across the board is to sustain, to self-sustain a middle school program. That's, that's what that is. If it eventually gets incorporated into the school budget, then that fee could probably, most likely would be reduced or changed. But in order to have what the people have requested, and when I sent down Mrs. Santi, and he's been looking for, and what the kids have been looking for, that's, that's the cost that it is. So I, I.
So.
I'm going to mention down that, basically, this year, the field hockey, I want to say they had like six or eight games that would, in a sense, almost double to twelve to fourteen games, where they have six or seven home and six or seven away, and you can count buses being away to probably total around maybe $3,000 to $3,500. So that's where the challenge of the cost is going. Middle School Cross Country, which had a few meets at home, that meets were doubled, and also there would be a tent in the invitation, where transportation, they get buses from here to all the cities where we run, and they'd also get transportation away because of the lower fee that was charged for Middle School Cross Country in track. This past season, they were very heavy on home meets, due to the fact that there just wasn't enough there to sustain the transportation costs. Middle School Basketball is something that was brought up. We are, I want to say, one of, one of two schools out of the fifty-four schools in central Massachusetts that do not have a Middle School Basketball program. So, as requested, I'm trying to introduce that, where they would be practicing over at Turkey Hill after school. Practice would be done before 5:30, 6 o'clock, each team getting an hour. Some games would be held over there, other games would be held here at the high school, middle high school. Going into the spring season in track, yeah, yes, we have a high school track team, a unified track team, and a middle school track team, with also some other activities going on at the turf. So it makes scheduling fun, to say the least, but all teams have the give and take. I put varsity, boys' lacrosse team, girls' lacrosse team on that side field that isn't really anything of a field, it's more of just, you know, grass. So everybody's playing their part, and the give and take, especially with this fall, where we've essentially moved it to Ludenberg, London, with all the rain, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a matter of the team working together as a team to put, to do the best for the kids. You know, so the opportunity for Middle School Athletics is just, it's that itself. It's providing an opportunity for kids to just, to do something else and to be involved in something. I always think everyone, yes, I'm an athletic director, I just want to see the kids involved. It's all I ever want, because I know when they're involved in something, whether it's an act, a club, or a sports team, they're in good hands, and it's less an opportunity for them for something wrong to happen, especially in this day and age. So the fees that I proposed, like I said, it's out there, it's, it's what was taken from the survey, I didn't do it on a whim or anything like that, it was, it's meant to be self-sustaining until it can get incorporated into the budget.
So, we heard a couple of concerns earlier this evening about field time, making sure that everybody has access to fields. Do we have enough fields? I know that has even posed an issue for us at the high school level. Now adding Middle School to that, and I heard you say that, you know, everybody's going to have to give a little, and we're going to have to work together. So how are you identifying prioritizing fields?
For a game, well, for example, last year, field hockey, Middle School Field Hockey practiced on the side field outside the cafeteria, it's a flat field, the same field that the band practices on, like game time for a game, or if there was an open field, like on the turf or out in front on Mass Ave, they were moving there. Soccer, well, it's the high school squad, but there's four soccer games they practice all over. Football practices are on one field out front, and they play their games on the turf field once a week. I mean, it literally is just a matter of working together to, that, no, yet sometimes you might not have the turf field, but you have the grass field. My coach, Kai, here's a varsity soccer team, and I had a half of a softball field, the outfield, and I never had to practice on a full field. So, you know, I had to make do with what I had. And as coaches, I work with them to try to do what's best for the, those strong athletes, to try to give them each an opportunity all over the place.
So relative to practice, we're specifically about track. I'm also, so that's a concern from my old high school years, doing track field events, and we have just the one track. Same situation, or same concern that I have as relative to games and scheduling basketball, because we've only got the one court at the middle and high school.
Oh, but did you read it? They would be using Turkey Hill?
For practice, but for games, for games as well.
And for games, yeah.
Six home games. So I'm working in either six home games.
I missed that part.
Yeah, I mean, it's called being total in the schedule, so six games will be home, whether that's at here at the high school, which I ideally would like to do, or if not, they would be at their camp.
But relative to the track, did you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, there's a lot of other schools that are in the same position that we have, that I'm not too familiar with any district that has several tracks at the same time. There's districts that have a track at their high school complex, and they have to share and work together to do it. So some might be doing field events, or some might be working together to do everything all at once, but that's, it's a matter of working together to make the best of what we do have.
So I, gathering from what we had heard earlier, I think it would just need an up level of working together? Does it sound?
Absolutely, I mean, the, I can give you the ideal schedule, and then it rains.
I know.
That schedule now just goes to clean the outdoor window. So it's a matter, like I said, it's a matter of, of the teams giving and taking over it to work together to make it happen. And as best I can, I do schedule night games for lacrosse that over the track during the day. I try to move things around, put things on a weekend, put people on the front field. It's, I mean, there's a lot going on, but as best I can, you know, they're getting.
I think this year was better than last year, by far, in all of the seasons that I've had to deal with, where practice was clearly stated, the kids knew where they were going this year, when they had games and practices, whereas in the past, they had no idea where they might be that day. So I think that our new athletic director is definitely doing a better job managing the field space that we have compared to the last one.
I'm not disputing that.
No, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if we're adding additional activities, we have finite capacity, and making sure that we have everybody represented and able to use the facilities that.
Right.
This now higher athletic fee would be paying for.
So, what I gather from that and hearing earlier is just hopeful that Middle School Athletics will not always get the short end of the stick. If that, if they're paying, or not always the ones forced every time off, if that makes any sense. And, and obviously, our high school athletes, I mean, they're paying athletic fee, but if that give and take is there just to ensure that it's, there really is give and take among all the stakeholders.
No, and I agree with that, and that's why I said earlier that I moved teams, I moved boys' lacrosse off the turf, so that other teams for practice, put them on the front field or even the side field. I, you know, that would, yesterday was, but tomorrow is actually a weird situation because of a team that boys' lacrosse was supposed to be playing forfeited the rest of their season. So I had to reschedule a game, or two games, that conflict, conflicted a little bit with an event that Middle School Track was trying to run. So they had to adjust a little bit to do certain events before again, and then other events, while the lacrosse gave us the, or on, they can do those on, like a shot put on, on that grass side field. So like I said, it is, it's a give and take, and it's, you know, ideally, I'd love to have three turf fields, two tracks, a dome, swimming pool, an ice game, right, but, you know.
Having worked with you for the last year on the Athletic Advisory, I can obviously, I can tell that you are focused on making it a fair program for all the teams and the individuals involved. And so I have to applaud you for that, because as far as I'm seeing, that you're not showing any favoritism, which, and I know you've talked about this in our meetings with, with the boosters as well. So I get, think the only other, you know, the big elephant in the room is, what are we getting for 200 bucks? Can we break that down into what's the cost for transportation? And I understand that we want to try and make it a self, it's got to be self-funded. So compared to the other communities, are those supplemental costs that were mentioned earlier? Meaning the school system is paying a portion of that?
Yeah, I can actually, I can actually attest to that. So in Northwood South Regional, the $100, the user fee that the Mississippi City Hall took before, that was increased when I was there. Built into the budget, each program for a track, which never used the high school track, Mississippi City Hall, but practice at the middle schools, and don't ever get on a track until they have a meet, that $100 covers transportation. Built into the budget is supplies of about $2,500, and all their coaches are covered for within the budget. So that $100 they are paying is basically the transportation fee, or was when I was there.
Okay. Would, would explain?
That's what I suspect in some of these lower fees in other communities, is there, it is not a completely self-sustained program.
And like I said, it's a necessary fee. I would not, if I had my choice, I wouldn't, or I'd want the kid, all the kids to play, and not pay a dime. But in the world that we live in today, if you look at any square district aside from high school schools.
Clinton. Doesn't Clinton?
Or Clinton, you know, that, that one's, that one's fun. But there's, there's a fee being charged, and it is unfortunate. And I can tell you that any fee that is being charged, I've never, ever, nor will I ever turn away an athlete or a family that is creating athletics. As long as a parent or a guardian communicates with me as to what is going on, I have set up payment plans, I've helped people out, I have people that have started a payment plan in August and are finishing up in June. I've never said no, and know what I'm getting through. I've worked with people as long as they're willing to communicate. It's those people that don't say anything, or when you reach out and never call back, that, that appearance makes it very difficult to try to figure out and work with them when they're not willing to be halfway.
I want to thank you for your efforts in expanding the programs. I think it's really important to give kids more opportunities. Couple ideas that I had too was even the high school kids may be using the fitness room as another option during practice to try to give more opportunities to, to open up space. Also, some parents had concerns about the increase from 50 to 200, but correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like you're expanding the schedules, adding more games and more away games.
You're adding, so it's, the biggest, the biggest up in the cost is you're expanding the schedule. So if you expand the schedule, you're including more away games, you're occurring more home games. So with home games, you're now occurring officials, with away games, you're now occurring the transportation. So no matter what, if you, with that increase, things are going up. So the fees could, like I said, it's unfortunate that it didn't improve in the budget, but academics always comes first, and I expect that to my coaches and my athletes, so I would never expect an athletic thing to bump a school thing, because that's, that's the more important piece. So until that can be included, that's.
I don't know if this is a question for you or Dr. Burnham too, but are the coaches pays for the new positions in the teacher contract?
No. Well, do you want to speak to that, Mr. Cassidy, of the stipends? If we add middle school coaches, are those stipends already in the contract?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I guess the other part to consider in this is, on paper, the two numbers look like a big difference, but we're also looking at a budget this year for our school district that is, that has reductions in it. So from an academic perspective, if we're looking at reductions there, we can't look at potentially subsidizing programs, regardless of whether we want to or not, when we're looking at reductions.
And we're trying to extend programs and give them more opportunities.
Yeah, right.
They're, they're different programs.
And those that know lacrosse, that was the first, I mean, Heather was the one who, who carried the torch on that, to get that brought on and away from self-sustained. So there was a five-year plan on that initially.
Yeah.
That was put forward for that program when it came on board. It was all self-sustained.
So it was not, yeah, that was a self-sustaining program.
So those athletes were paying big time money to be part of that. So, I mean, hopefully, at some point, this becomes either partially subsidized within our budget at some point down the road, but, I mean, but it's, to create something self-sustaining, there's, it's everything, so.
The only other real concern I have, and I've heard this expressed a few times, is there's no real family cap. And I wonder how many families might be impacted by.
There's a cap.
There's a cap per season.
At the high school, yes.
Okay. But we're talking about the middle school right now.
Correct.
Right, and as far as I recall, there's no cap listed in there.
Because, again, the program needs to be self-sustained.
Yeah, it can't be a cap.
So if you are going to, if you are going to put a limit cap that crosses over, is the revenue's going to be lost somewhere, so I'm either going to take, I'm going to rob Peter to pay Paul or vice versa.
Do we have any idea how many families might be impacted by that, or? Maybe it's the twenty percent.
Until they're registered. I mean, you can't know until the registrations would come in.
Yeah.
At which point we're willing to work with them on a payment schedule?
That goes, that's always an option, that, to be honest. I have, like I said, I have families that have, you know, families that have three high school kids playing a sporting season, and they have huge help, and they, James, can I pay this, then, this, then, this, then? Absolutely.
And I'll tell you, when I first started with the Athletic Advisory, and actually first started with this, with this committee, I put the athletics very low on the list of priorities, of things that needed to be done. Having worked with those teams for the last two years, I have now grown to understand the importance of the high school athletic experience, and the, the fact that we, at one point, got rid of the middle school opportunities is, is pretty sad, but if we have an opportunity to start bringing that back, I welcome that.
It is great to have it back here. It is great to have it back here, because we know that most, many families will find other teams in the area, club teams, you know, whatever it may be, if their middle school student wants to play those sports. So it's exciting to have those opportunities be back, you know, with the talent.
Are you talking about those opportunities like a, a homework club or, or a type of program? And you look at 200 dollars?
Oh, that's nothing.
Nothing.
That's nothing, that's your uniform if you're lucky. And no, and that's part of, that's the other part of this thought that I have, is that, you know, families have had to, you know, seek out those opportunities, and they are two, three, four times the cost. So, it's great that we're looking at ways to bring it back to Lunenburg.
One other concern that I, I've heard from parents was about the days a week, the middle school practices, is it a lower number? Is it three, four, five days? How many days a week are they actually being active, whether it's a meet, a game, or practice?
That's a term by the coach, and how many times they practice a week. We're usually at a middle school level, having three or four prep, two or three practices in a week a week, that's, that's the, that's one of the middle school programs. And that's, that you can reach out to any district around you, and that's, that's, it is very simple to their, what their middle school program is. Because you're, again, you're giving them the experience to enjoy and to welcome them into wearing a school uniform and, and having that school pride that, that these high school teams have. And especially for them, that you need something. And you're just now able to do that at a younger age and bring those kids on board to have even a greater experience when they get to the JV varsity level.
Thank you.
This is an action item, or?
It's discussion.
It's a discussion item, right?
So it doesn't sound like we need to vote on anything.
No?
I think, I think that that's up to you and your comfort level. I can tell you that this proposal was pushed out by email to all parents at the middle school and the Turkey Hill, which is why you had many parents here this evening to make comment. So if you feel that you've, you've heard enough, that you want to move forward, that's fine. If you wanted additional information, we can come back with that information at the next meeting, and then you can vote at that time.
I, I feel like I've gotten the answers I need based on the parent input to date. I would kind of wait, like to wait until the next meeting to see if there's additional parental input after we've had this discussion, and if people who are in the audience, you know, share the discussion with, and the video with other people, to make sure that we fully understand the impact.
I agree, as long as the, the timeline makes sense for the athletic department and the school.
Well, I guess the question, that's the question I have.
I, I think we could move forward right now, because I think we've been working on this since October. So I would feel comfortable with that as well, and I think that sports signups for the fall start in June. So if we want to have a middle school program that starts for the fall, we would have to get that done. That, you know, that's
The, the difficult thing with, and I'll do whatever you guys ask for, right now, cross-country and field hockey for middle school, their schedules are done. And the basketball schedule is pretty much most of being done. If you are to say no, or you need to change that, I need to know to adjust accordingly and tell the school so they can find other teams to play, because it's unfair of that.
Can I ask the chair to open up for public comment on any of this discussion for a period of 10 minutes?
So you're asking public comment to move from?
Well, I'm asking for some public input on this topic specifically.
Public comment.
And I don't know if that's allowable under the rules, but we do have some people still in the audience who did make public comment earlier, I would like to make sure that
Okay, well, take it out of order. We can take it out of order.
That's what I'm wondering, is if we move up public comment.
We got to take public comments out of order.
Before voting.
Mm-hmm. Then that means you're taking it out of order, and then if they have any comments to make on other things, it's out of order.
Then can I make a motion to defer this until we have the rest of the discussions? Differ a vote?
Okay, so you're asking to move, so you're asking to move this discussion item to after public comment?
Correct.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to move, to move middle school athletics proposal.
Okay. All right, now then, we'll just, you'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. High school proposal.
The next two proposals, the $20 late fee, I'll start there. The $20 late fee is, is not viewed as a moneymaker, it's trying to put in place as a deterrent for people not to register on time. The biggest thing, Massachusetts state law requires that if you are participating in athletics, you need to have an up-to-date physical 13 months to the day. Out of the 64 middle school students that participated in track this year, there were several of them that their physical was not only a year old, but two, three, four years old. That information had to get tracked out at last minute in order for them to participate. Having a deadline where people have to just register. For example, I had someone that registered for middle school sports in the spring and the wintertime, and then decided not to play. Totally fine. They don't incur a fee, nothing happens, they just registered and filled out the necessary forms. If that person wanted to play, they were all set and ready to go. The fee is in place to make sure that those forms are completed in a timely manner, so that I can go to a coach and say, here's your roster, these are the kids that are eligible to try out. They've all been checked for grades, health and physical, and then tested for their baseline concussion, all their forms are signed. They're able to try out. It's not someone coming in the day of tryouts, trying to sign up, to get on the court, to then try to make sure that they have all their right things, to go check the nurse's office, to then go back, make sure the information's in, to call them, to make sure they've signed off on all the school uniforms, to then try to tell the coach that yes or no, they can or cannot participate. Now a coach knows, okay, I have X amount of people, I can now base my trials, my practice plan around that number. As opposed to X amount of kids coming in last minute, wait a minute, I wasn't expecting this, now I got to redo everything that I was, I was thinking of that. It's, it's putting things in a timely manner, that's all, but that is, it's just a deterrent.
This was something brought up several years ago, because there was a lot of backlog that happened administratively. I don't know if you want to let us know, the administrative secretary, how many hours a week she has to give?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. So what was, we were experiencing was some, a ton of unpaid overtime, right when seasons were beginning, because without any real hard deadline, and any, and, you know, any sort of action against those that just would come the day of tryouts with their stuff, there was a backlog in just getting through everything you said and just processing all the paperwork. It, it doesn't happen magically, and when it all comes at once, it, it does create that. So this idea was not, has been in discussion for a while, just as looking for ways to, how do we help ensure that everything gets processed?
I think there were people trying out that didn't even submit paperwork.
Not this year, no.
No, but in the past, they would just come to tryouts and have nothing. Okay? And technically, they shouldn't be trying out.
I agree with that.
It's, it's illegal.
Industry of
Right, yeah. So if
Unnecessary things.
And this year, they didn't do that as much, because you had them online.
Right, and that's, and that's
Okay, which made it nice and easy.
Which, to not only make it more efficient, but the system that we have to register athletes online, once the information is in there, it takes, it is a process to start. I'm not going to lie, it's going to take you maybe 15 to 25 minutes to complete the first time around. Once the information is in there, unless something changes, in order to register your athlete for the next season, you click the sport. That's it. Everything else is done. So it, it really, there's really no need for someone to wait to the day of tryouts to do that. It's already, it's, everything's in there for them just to say, yep, we're trying out. Or, yeah, they're interested in playing this. And they come tryouts, they don't show up, or they reach out, nah, it's not, change your mind, it's not a problem, take care of the list.
I think the, the online is definitely going to help increase the registrations, you don't have those late registrations. But I would say also, don't let them try out if they haven't registered. I would definitely hold firm on that policy, and if they register later, then they're just going to have less days to try out, whether it's one or two days. I do have concerns over the, the late registration fee, I think it's more of a, I don't think parents are going to like it, I, I think it's more of the kind of the concept of the carrot versus the stick, like, maybe a, a different scenario might be better, it's like, maybe an early registration fee, where they, they have a discounted early registration, if they get it in by a certain date, and then just the registration fee after that.
I totally respect that and get that, but then again, you're taking away from the money that I need to pay for all these things that aren't subsidized.
I think it would be just reviewing the registration fees and what an early registration fee could cost, looking over those numbers.
There's no registration
There's no registration
There's no fee.
Or, sorry.
They pay their user fee.
They pay their user
We can't reduce the user fee, because you register early, that's the number that they pay.
You have different fees
No, not really.
Twenty-five dollars.
The only way you do it is to jack the fee to 275, and make it a 250 if you do it on time. So it becomes semantics at that point.
Yeah.
It, it's
It's the same thing.
It can be online, but it's still, people can choose to still click the button late if there's nothing, if, if there's no
Penalty.
Penalty.
Yeah.
Consequence. Or incentive, either way you want to look at it, consequence or incentive. It's, did you find this, in, moving to online from paper copies of registration, did you find fewer people registering late, whatever late is?
So in the wintertime, when the first, when we introduced the online registration, I, it was, it was more of like an understanding that there was going to be questions people registering, maybe because it's a totally new thing where they registered on, on paper for the longest time here in the district. So there was people that came in the day of tryouts, the second day of tryouts, it was still a lot, you know, all of them were filled out, still having trouble, a lot of phone calls, but then it comes springtime, where is it? So 191 students participating in high school sports, 76 students registered during the two-week period after the 30-day registration. Prior to that 30-day registration period, I sent out a seasonal newsletter, which contained the registration information, and then on every Sunday, or right before we get started, I would send out another email reminding parents that they needed to register their student athletes before this deadline. With all that being said, 21 of those students, of the 76 students, registered during the first week of tryouts. So not only did we have 76 students registering late after that 30-day period, another 21 didn't do it until the first week of tryouts, with and email reminders weekly of our online registration.
It's a significant number, and it has a significant impact to the efficiency
And to the staff.
Yeah.
Processing that paperwork.
I mean, if we were talking fewer than 10 registering late, that's a significant number.
And what makes it even harder too, is that when teams that we play against cancel their season because of lack of numbers on, on JV teams or lack of numbers within the program, with all these late registrations, that just prolongs me finding out if I'm able to sustain a program, if I need to go out and, and see if we have more kids interested in playing, or anything of that nature, to make sure that, you know, where status quo is an athletic department and can put a team on the field.
The other part that comes into play is eighth graders playing on some teams, and waivers, and that's where late registrations also affect that, because if you don't know if you have enough
To field the team.
Nine through 12
Yeah.
Until the last minute, then, or during tryouts, then you may have, need eighth graders, but they didn't try out. So, or you may think you need them, and then they all come at the last minute
Right, and you don't
And those kids have put in the time and effort to try out, and they're not, it's not even a consideration for them. I feel like we need to do something to incent, however, however we do it.
It's a deterrent.
Well, incent, deter, I mean
Yeah.
To ensure that people are signing up.
Yeah, it's the same
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's
Right. If you register on time, you get it for 250, if you register late, it's 275.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
It's the same
It's exactly the same thing.
It's a pretext, it's
Except relative to the free and reduced lunch, the fee would remain, the $25 late fee, which I don't necessarily have an issue with that, either waiving the other 250s or portions thereof. And that would be more of the incentive, because you have to then not pay the $25. We had, so of these, of these free and reduced numbers, how many were late?
Oh, you know, I can, I can get that for you, I didn't include that in here.
So even if, yeah, okay, I, I, I'm not sure that's material, but I was curious.
And then I guess the second part of this is the free and reduced lunch portion of athletics. I, I, again, as I said earlier, and I will say it again, and as long as I'm an athletic director, I'll be able to say it, I will never deny a student the opportunity to participate. However, someone qualifying for free lunch, they don't have to pay for, their lunch is free. It's subsidized, the school gets money from the government in order to do that, to pay for, to help pay for that student. The athletic department does it. When a student qualifies for reduced lunch, the same thing, the school gets money to help subsidize for that student. The athletic department does not. The, the paying a reduced portion, I threw out the number of 125 because I reduced the fee in half. That number doesn't have to be 125, I just felt being consistent with the program of free and reduced lunch, that a person on a reduced fee should be contributing a reduced fee. If you want to change that number, one, then welcome to ideas, I just threw it out there compared to some of the other districts. I think, God, there, 60% of the original user fee of the districts are half, some districts have 30, some districts have a ridiculous formula in order to figure it out. So I just, I try to make it simple, that doesn't have to be the all and all of it.
So I guess what, I'd be interested in what the, the ratio is for the reduced lunch, how much is subsidized for that, and then possibly use that, or at least a median, as potential guidance. You know, are the reduced lunches being subsidized 75% for example, then would we look at reducing the fee to 75% for those students? And what kind of, I'd be interested in what potential hardships might arise out of that, because most people are living paycheck to paycheck, and absorbing an additional 125 bucks, is the difference between your lights and not?
A $125, it doesn't have to be paid out from
And, and there's that, but I, I would just be interested in
And right here, it says seven students, was it only seven students?
Yes. Yes. And again, the idea is just to be consistent. That's all that I was.
Is the, based to Dr. Burnham, is the reduced lunch means tested? Does it, a portion depending on?
They have to submit paperwork and they have to be qualified, yes.
Is it a set percentage then for every, every student?
I believe it's a sliding scale.
Sliding, yeah, okay. Can we look at potentially a sliding scale for the reduced fee for those students?
Perhaps in accordance with what percentage they are paying.
Right.
Right.
For their, I mean, that, that honestly would make the most sense.
That, that.
For the reduced.
It seems fairly consistent instead of an arbitrary number. Because right now, this is the one twenty-five. Well, you know, we need to have a starting point. It is arbitrary.
It was half.
That's all that I was trying to do.
Right.
Because I.
It's half, it's not arbitrary, yeah.
Well.
Well, yeah, he didn't arbitrarily choose it, yeah. He just picked half, he reduced by half.
And also in accordance with what neighboring districts are doing.
Right. Understood. Which are also subsidized by their schools. Yeah. Yeah, we're not talking a lot of numbers. We're not talking a lot of money. But for a, a family that qualifies, it can be a significant chunk.
So we have to have this back to us by the next meeting? This has to be implemented for the next sports season? So those signups are in June, correct? When are you having signups?
Secretively, you can actually register for fall athletics right now.
What? Secretly?
Officially.
Okay, we won't tell anyone.
Officially athletics, if, depending on what your decision on the late registration fee would be open the entire month of July.
July.
With the first two, with, and so that first registration period ending July, the end of July, that two-week late registration period would then open up the first two weeks of August, the tryouts beginning. For football, August, Friday, August.
The middle, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Well, I, I would be fine if we just changed the one twenty-five to.
Based on the sliding.
Sliding scale equal to the.
Just the language?
Yeah.
You would be okay with that? If we just.
I would be okay with.
And that would be okay?
The sliding scale.
Okay.
And then.
The other, okay.
I, yeah, I don't have a problem with the twenty-five-dollar.
Late fee.
Late fee. As a.
Deterrent.
Deterrent or incentive.
True. Just click the button?
Click the button.
And also as a side note too, the communication piece is always viewed to be, like, if, I'm totally understanding that, let's say, August seventeenth, if a kid moves into the district, their kid wants to play sports, to charge them a late registration fee, that to me, that's just, that, that, that's just a dumb idea. I mean, it's not there for, for that purpose.
Right.
If someone moves in or transfers into the district, that's, that's not why the late fee's there. It's for people that have been given this information several times over, where all they need to do is, for the most part, the majority of them now, just need to go in and click a button. That's, that's the deterrent.
So, we can approve this with the changes? If you wanna, Jim?
I would move to approve the proposed outline with the change to the reduced fee equal to sliding scale. However, we decide to work that in terms of equating to the reduced lunch.
Scale, right.
Scale, yeah.
Second?
All on paper?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
One other comment I just wanted to make. Surrounding each season, there is ample time, several weeks, if, if not more. Just so if people are considering, students are considering, do I wanna play again? I know most students, it's automatic for them. But if they had a question mark, whatever it was for them, there is some time for that, for them to make that decision. Just that having a late registration time period still provides ample decision-making time if people are looking for that.
So with the new online registration process, you will be getting, or not, you, well, actually, that's, you will be getting. Everybody in the school district will be getting several reminders, as well as a newsletter that I send out each season as to when the registration period starts. That registration information will be on the athletic website for people to see when it ends, when it begins, where to go. You will be reminded several times over, just a reminder while you're putting your athletic on, and before you flip it, co-register. So it's not gonna be like just hidden everywhere so you can't find it. I try to make it as out there as possible so that you can just get it.
So we did that, right?
Yes.
That's done. We're done with that one?
Yes.
Facility fees proposal? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you staying for the?
Oh, I'll come in.
Okay. Yeah.
Just in case there's an issue.
Mr. Londa?
So, what we have is an initial proposal for some changes to be made to the facility's use rates for the district. This is, you know, it is some substantial changes, but it is an evolution nonetheless. It is not really a radical departure from what we can do. The, what we tried to do on this proposal was, we wanted to try to eliminate the, the youth sports contracts where it was kind of putting us into a negotiation at the start of each season, to try to get everybody in agreement about what they would pay to a rate that is based upon the use rate for hours per use, cost per hour of use. And so that was some of the underlying thought process to try to get that so it would reflect, you know, what people have been doing. I went back to look at a year's period from April thirtieth, twenty eighteen through, through twenty nineteen, collect, collect the data on who, who's charged the facility, was it charged for labor? Was it charged for facility use for a facility? Numbers of hours that they, they used it for, types of facilities they used, whether it be gymnasiums, or cafeterias, or what have you, athletic shields. And put all that in large spreadsheets. You may have seen that. It's a little exhaustive, but we, I put that together. And then I went and looked at all our organizations that used our facilities over that year's period and put them in categories by our, by our facility's use policy. Category one being school organizations. We didn't really have any category two. Category three were all of our boosters, P T O. And then category four started with all of our youth sports. And then category five were our nonprofits, that, that made the youth organizations, but were not sports. And then six, we didn't really, we didn't really have any sixes that actually use the school actually. Sixes are nonprofit organizations that are outside of Lunenburg. And then seven were all of the for-profit organizations that, that uses the school facility. Now, there were only five of them. So, three of whom were dance groups that used the auditorium here at Lunenburg High School. And then the other two, the other two were the Lunenburg Sports Clinic and Basketball Camp. And then the last one was a relatively new endeavor that we're, will be participating in this week, which is a, which is global premiere soccer, which we are in the three fields from us and running a, a weekend-long tournament for soccer on these fields. So people are coming from, so that's where you could think of, from Maine to Puerto Rico to Connecticut, Virginia, New Jersey. They're all coming up here to be participating with this. Anyway, they're, they're wonderful profits. So all of that went into the spreadsheet by type and then numbers of hours of use. And I took, you know, what we actually collected, what we would charge them, compared that to what we would have charged them had we not had these youth sports contracts, and calculated all that out. And, you know, what I essentially found was kind of what I kind of knew where to find is that, for the most part, you know, we were collecting a lot, we were collecting a lot more from, from like Lunenburg Youth Soccer than we might otherwise have needed to based upon our rates and their usage. The Bengals were about to stop kind of where we were wound up being at the end of this year. And then the junior basketball was, was, would have seen a doubling of their rates. So that was, that was more of an inform, kind of how we come up with this strategy of how this might work, this new strategy. So what I essentially did was eliminating the contracts, I said, okay, we'll have a youth, a youth sports category for Lunenburg. Those rates would tend to be fairly low. And we would have a nonprofit rate, which essentially would be your adult groups, which will, like I said, in last year, we hadn't, we had none of those. And then lastly, they would have youth for profits. And I said, it's only those five. So when I crunched those numbers, we, we kind of set rates that drove us towards trying to get fairly close to where they, what they've been historically seeing over the last two years. And that's what you see in this proposal. It is some pretty low rates. Many of the, the youth nonprofits, LISA would see a slight, you know, a substantial reduction, probably about three thousand. The Bengals would be about the same, I think, maybe a little bit lower than they would have just, you know, they went, what they paid this last year. And then finally, the basketball would see probably a little, you know, about a, about a twelve-hundred-dollar increase using these rates. And what was driving that is that, you know, a lot of the Lunenburg junior basketball costs are, are labor costs for having custodians here on the weekends opening the buildings, that they're, you know, they're, what they were contributing for the facility upkeep is very low. And yet, at such large numbers of hours of usage, it was almost seven hundred hours in gym time. So even, even by pretty small rates, small changes from, from up to four dollars an hour made big jumps. So we, we put this together, I said, to try to make sure that nobody got gouged in one year, but at the same time, to kind of hold them about the same and allow them then some of the possibility to, you know, influence their, their financial position by either increasing the numbers of hours of usage, decreasing the numbers of hours of usage, and driving those costs. We took, I took this, and I did send this out to five organizations. Earlier in this week, I sent it to LISA, youth football, and to the, the youth basketball, the boys scouts and the girls scouts. The boys scouts and the girls scouts, you know, they're not, they're not like the youth sports in that they don't have like a single leader, like they're multiple leaders. And so they all kind of contribute to this. But we sent it out to the people that we've been dealing with or been sending emails out to throughout the year on that. So let me go over what the, what the proposal is and then, and then do the highlights. So for labor rates, we looked at, at the fact that we had, we've been charging custodians, A V support, which is our I T personnel, our support use of the auditorium here at the high school, and the kitchen staff. And then we went back and looked at the rates that we currently are paying to people that do those jobs. And we're looking at, you know, some increases. So it goes from custodian from thirty-two dollars to thirty-four dollars an hour. That, I will say and tell you that that's an average. It's meant to look at, that we say is an average. But we have custodians currently that are over the thirty-two dollars, they can give payback. They're, they're under, or maybe going around twenty-five, twenty-six dollars, and that's what they get. So we, we stress that it's on the average. It pays all of the costs of those custodians for all of the events, and also puts a little additional in for, for administrative costs, processing all of the pay for the costs they get paid. So the two-dollar increase, we've been at for itself for about these three years. So it's a relatively small comparison to the, and they're, they're, they didn't remove more. We wanted to make sure that our rates stayed consistent. A V support, the, the bigger jump from thirty-five dollars to forty dollars a month based upon, you know, who's actually doing the work. And I, I came back to me to, I mean, that's higher than that, politically matching, what they actually get personally for pay. And then same with the kitchen staff, from twenty-five dollars to twenty-four. We added a new category called field monitor. So we don't really have anybody that, that currently sets, I would, the intent there would be, if we needed to put somebody on to the support event on athletic field, we would potentially be able to have seventy-three, you know, some athletic coach to help push what's needed in the event so far. So, kind of technical things of that nature to help support the event at this point. And additionally, a field monitor might also be used, you know, if we're having problems with compliance for events on athletic fields, we might come back to them and just say, well, you can use this, but we want somebody there to make sure that you're doing what's supposed to be, to incur our regulations. So we included that as a base, but not with any regulations, just being part of it with, with that at this point. The, the rates, so I chose just on here, it was the current rates that we have. I know there was confusion about having these nonprofit Lunenburg youth rates in asterix, saying you have to have this, this, you know, seasonal agreement required, and that it causes some confusion over the years. So this will make that go away. The rates that, you know, that we like to, that we think makes sense will be going to effect July one, twenty nineteen. We do have at least one organization that has been built and has paid for a period beyond, past July one. And that is a, a, it's, it's a soccer booster club that runs a summer soccer program and uses the turf field for games for boys and girls, high school soccer during, during the evening. And it's five events for each. And they have, they're built, they have to pay. So, this is the nonprofit rate. So the major change is just here, so we included a three-dollar per hour usage rate for these nonprofit youth, for the small gyms. We created a new category, which is for the high school gym, high school, middle school gymnasiums for our boys gym. It would be twice, twice the price of the small one, and, but you essentially get about twice the amount of gym for that rate. The, a lot of the other rates, as I said, are, are, are low. We use the gymnasium as kind of the, it's the biggest space and it's the highest rate that we would charge in nonprofit. And so all the others are relatively low. The turf field and the grass field, we kept the same kind of stagger from the turf field that our highest cost at thirty-five dollars an hour, up from twenty-five that we've been. that our highest cost at $35 an hour, up from 25 that we've been charging this year, the grass fields to 30, the primary school to 25, and the practice field to 15. That was the biggest single jump, but we haven't, you know, finally made that a better feel, so we've been overseeing it, we haven't fertilizing it. It is better, but it is still not as, you know, it's still not as good as a primary school. We put in field lights at a pretty substantial bump. We were at 750, went to 15, and there was to do quite a flat something for eventual maintenance on field lights. It doesn't happen often, but if we need to have somebody come in and do some work on field lights, it becomes pretty expensive. So previously, we were focused mostly on just collecting up for the electricity. Just puts a little bit something back in, into facilities use for repairs. And then we added two new things that we, we haven't been charging before. Concession stand at $5 for the nonprofits, $10 for, just for the general, or for the nonprofit youth, $10 for nonprofit, $20 for, for profit-based organizations. And also the press box, which we added, starting at 10. The big users on those, you know, and our users tend to be the junior, the Lunenburg junior football and cheer for their home games, they use the concession stands, they use the, the press box. So that would affect them. And then lastly, one of the things we did, did come up with is a proposal for the food storage rate of $100 per month. Now, this really only affects, currently affects one organization. The junior, or the youth basketball does currently have storage on school grounds. They have a portion of the white storage shed off of the track, and they do store year-round there. So we do put that in as a, as a separate rate to be, to be charged. So when I looked at what we were doing with the football program, the, even with the addition of the concession stand and the press box and the storage, we were putting them at about the same cost as they ran this year. And so I, I think that, so there, there is some mitigation there that, oh, well, that's suddenly just going to, going to add another $1,200 to their operation. But it, it, we did look at for, to try to make sure that, you know, we weren't going to be, you know, spending some large bill on folks by this proposal. The only other piece that's kind of new is about how we would invoice and what I'm recommending for invoicing. Currently, our policy just says, you know, everybody has to start before the event. And that would be generally what we still continue to do, with the exception of the seasonal users, so the big sports, basketball, you know, basketball, soccer, and football. And what we would propose to do with them is that require a 50% before the start of their use, 45 days later, additional 25%. And then we would wrap up after their season ending, ends, with them being required to pay them to remain 25% within 10 days. And the reason why we have that is, is frequently during the course of the season, there will be things happen, snow days, cancellations for any unforeseen reason, but allow us to make that adjustment and give that final bill so that, you know, okay, within 10 days, hopefully covered all funds and they're set, we're set. And that would be, or hopefully, an orderly process. So that is the, the nature of the proposal. As I said, we did send out five emails to these, to these organizations. As I said, I kind of suspect that however you treat the girls scouts, it's how you should treat the boy scouts. This year, we have built both boy scouts and girl scouts. We have collected from the boy scouts this year. We have not really received anything yet from girl scouts this year. And I would recommend that, you know, take this for consideration, knowing that they really haven't had this drive for very long, they might want to come and talk to you about it.
I just have a question in regards to the concession stand. Where do the booster clubs fall on that? Is that a nonprofit Lunenburg youth organization, like Track Boosters?
Yeah, so the, so booster clubs would be, are category three, and so they, they would not be part of any of this.
None of it?
Sure.
Okay. The school booster clubs would not?
Yeah, but it would affect Lunenburg.
Outside.
Junior basketball. It would not affect the musicators.
Okay.
Those are the, right, because they may be the only user that, that's not a booster. But we might get two users that.
Right, okay.
Can't just pay.
So since, since it just went out to them, do you want to?
Maybe I'll have it for a few days, but I think, you know, this would be worth delaying.
Okay.
Until the next meeting.
So we'll put this on for the next meeting for approval, for action?
I appreciate the analysis that you put into this and doing the comparative to what was charged versus what the proposal looks like. And that, you know, most of these are, like you mentioned, some of them have been overcharged and using the negotiated process that we did before. And now with an hourly, that it looks like it's more beneficial for most organizations. So thank you for that very detailed analysis.
And it takes out the negotiation piece, which is a lot of work.
Right, and having a, a flat fee for, across the board. There's no question, no, no ambiguity.
Right.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you for your work on this. I did have a question, it was brought up, about girl scouts. I don't know if you, you could expand on that? It looked like the rates were actually going to go lower?
Yeah, so this is, I mean, I think that's kind of the, so under our existing rates, they were being charged as the, as a nonprofit Lunenburg organization. So by going to this, we'd be essentially moving them to a nonprofit Lunenburg youth rate. So, you know, they would see about a 50% reduction. They may still not like that, but that's, you know, I, I know that, you know, we were some of what we heard was, hey, look, we really were kind of giving guidance not to go anywhere where they were going to be charged. And so that may be different between boy scouts and girl scouts, but that's kind of what I was hearing from the girl scouts.
And then the, the other question I had, I was just looking for more clarification too on the, it was the youth soccer and the youth basketball. It seemed like there were drastic changes. I don't know if I'm missing anything. It went from, for soccer, 8,000 to around 14,000, and then the basketball from 16,000 to almost 10,000?
So, so in this spreadsheet I had, the, the light blue is taking our existing rates and applying them against what they used, and it was meant to be kind of a starting point to kind of just figure out, okay. And we took our just in what would happen, and I said, we knew that the junior basketball, because of that almost 700 hours of gym time, was going to, going to see a substantial increase, and in fact, it was essentially doubled. So on this, the two columns, I would say, to compare are, in, in the green, the total cost for all these organizations versus the far right total cost in the, in the kind of rose color.
Great, thank you.
And, yeah, so the only youth sports I really saw an increase was, was junior basketball, where they would go from 8,500 to 9,834. And like I said, they, they do have, their program starts in, in mid-October, goes to March, early March. It's a lot of hours, and so maybe they can look at that and decide they really, really want that, and it's to be worth their while, whether they can maybe pair something back in October. Thank you.
Because that is, versus the seasonal fees, that is the advantage, that groups now can decide, we'd like to scale it back that little bit, we'd like to, you know, bring down the cost of those rental fees a little bit, so maybe, you know, we take, you know, a little less here, you know, early season skills and drills, things like that, pair those back a little bit to, to adjust the cost.
We, as I said, we did try to keep them so that, I mean, I think, you know, when I started looking at gym rates, we were focused, I was focused on junior basketball, because I mean, you have this 700 hours, and that's going to drive, is that we initially did it at $4 an hour for a gymnasium, a small gymnasium, and it was a big jump for them. And so just, just by pulling it back an hour, because there's so many hours, it kept that increase relatively dual, I thought.
That might change totally if they have a middle school basketball program as well.
Yes, it might, it might reduce the amount of hours they need.
So I, I, I'm sure that will, that number would come down for them, based on what happens with the middle school athletics programs. So, so we're going to put this on the calendar for the next meeting?
June 5.
June 5, okay. School calendar, school committee calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Wanda.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wanda. We just need to know that you are available, the first ones, the workshop meeting July 17th and August 14th, based on your summer calendars?
I can't do the 17th, I'm not here.
Oh, you're on vacation. So the first one doesn't work.
That's okay. I think if we can find out when people are available in July, we can select another date and bring it back.
Okay. And August 14th works? Is everyone's back on August 14th? Yeah, okay. So you have, please send out an email for July availability for the workshop meeting, so that we can contact Dorothy to come and facilitate it. And I think that was the only thing that we really needed to.
Look at now.
Look at, was the summer months, because all the others are consistent with our typical schedule for the year. The first and third Wednesday of the month. Unless it falls during a, a school break, then it's the following week or the week before. So Blizzard Bag recommendation.
So at this point, I'm going to make a recommendation relative to the Blizzard Bag discussion that's been ongoing for the last several months. At this point, I'm recommending that we postpone implementation of a Blizzard Bag pilot until the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education offers guidelines to districts for implementation of what they call the alternative structured learning days. We know that this year, the Department of Ed requested copies of plans for any district that was currently implementing a Blizzard Bag or an alternate day pilot or, or program. And typically, when they do that, they're, they're reviewing to make sure that they have the right kind of guidelines in place. So I think it would be wise to wait until we see what the Department of Ed recommends. I can tell you that part of what you asked me to do was check with union leaders relative to budgetary impact. Conversations that I had with the par union and the teacher union raised no, no concerns that would lead to a budgetary impact. But I do have some serious concerns regarding the oversight of the quality and appropriateness of assignments, consistency in implementation and evaluation of assignments, a plan as to how all employees would contribute to the alternate day. Currently, they report to work 180 days, and they all have a certain role to do, but what would the role of a school nurse be as an example in the context of a Blizzard Bag Additionally, we need to be able to track and report participation, how many students completed the assignment. Essentially, that would constitute attendance for the day, completion of assignments. The planning for and management of implementation would be significant and would largely fall to building administrators. And I recommend that before we invest a significant amount of additional time to develop a detailed plan, that we wait and see if there's any additional guidance that comes from the Department of Ed. Any additional guidance might provide possible systems that could ease some of the management concerns, or include requirements that could prove to be too big a burden for the district to take on. But I do want to acknowledge and sincerely thank all of the members of the alternate day committee. They, they did an extraordinary job coordinating and soliciting input from all stakeholders. And while this might be disappointing for the members of the committee, or the staff and parents and students who advocated that a Blizzard Bag model would be something that they could support, I'd like for them not to feel like their time was spent in vain, but it actually drove a lot of really good discussion, which led to a lot of questions that we can't provide really good answers for at this point. So we'll wait and see what the Department of Ed has to say, and I think it will potentially make a move forward, if we feel that we can move forward, based on what comes from the department, that much better in implementation. I, I think if you're going to do something, do it well. And where there are so many questions around, you know, how, how do all staff members contribute to the day, how are we going to manage the tracking, how are we managing the quality, we don't have the staff right now to, to be able to do all of that and do it well. So at this point, I would recommend that we delay and wait to see if any further guidance comes from the Department of Ed.
Do we need to take action on that? That was just, we're going away?
I think.
That was that right?
I, I think that's where we're at, we're sort of tabled with this for the, for the time being. Although I guess a vote to accept my recommendation.
Yeah.
All move to accept superintendent's recommendation. Regarding the votes, Ben.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Galapagos Island president, update.
I don't want to be rude, but I need to water. I'll be right back.
Mrs. Kiran. Hello.
Hi, congratulations. So I give you a little bit of an outline at this point, a year and a month from kickoff, hopefully.
Yep.
Which is exciting. It was ironic, the other day, we're studying evolution in class, and we're looking at the math, and a couple of the kids are going on the trip, and we pointed out the Galapagos Day, we're like, woo-hoo! So it's fun to have, to be that excited about it. We have 12 kids signed up today.
Can kids still sign up?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
And if they actually kind of keep it open, really on the later side.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the price goes up as we get closer.
Right, right.
With anything. But it's still under $4,000, which is great for a night and day trip. So at this point, we have two chaplons going, so the 12 kids, 12 kids get the two chaplons, so that's great too.
Yeah, okay. That's it?
That's what I got.
That's it?
And then I'll stop you in the fall, I mean, it's still.
Right, no, it's good.
In the fall, with, you know, open house and stuff like that, we'll definitely have some invasions and people set up, so that.
Okay.
Try that.
New freshmen, maybe, get some more, yeah.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe we'll have a new look at their financial situation also.
What grades is it open to?
It's open to the current eighth graders, which will be, just will finish their ninth grade year at that point.
To 12th.
Yeah.
And, and you said a year and a month, is it after they go to school?
Year 2020. Yeah, the plan is, the greater company works, so that they kind of wait till like March-ish or so to officially book the date, so that we can most definitely be out. March-ish or so to officially book the date, so that we can most definitely be out of school and not miss finals or anything else like that, they understand.
Based on snow days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they wait as long as they can to officially book the tickets, to work with us, with the whole school.
Great, thank you. I think this is a great idea, and it's a great way to give kids more opportunities and expand.
Yeah, I went two years ago with the kids, and it was just amazing.
Thank you.
Right.
It was.
Well, thank you for staying that whole time, for that two minutes. I know, I know.
There must be a cot around somewhere.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, now we're back to public comment. Public comment open to the public. I'm so sorry that you didn't get in the first time.
I'm right in the front on 11 Main Street. Where you are, to Ludenberg, we've been here for two and a half years, and I'm so impressed with the school system, I have two boys, and they're doing well. I had been following up with Superintendent Burnham and the athletic director since the survey went out for a middle school sports proposal, which I am in favor of and support. I was really surprised, that was like the one thing I felt like was missing from Ludenberg when we moved here. I have a unique perspective in that I'm a middle school teacher at a small middle high school, and our students have access to sports. And their athletic fee is actually $250. So I see the middle school sports proposal as building a program that's going to provide students with more opportunities, and considering that, like, travel, basketball is $125, and that double pass, transportation provided, I mean, I think we can see where those costs end up coming from. I just wanted to voice my support, and thank everyone for all they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello, welcome.
I just wanted to come, actually, and this is not in particular attention to the middle school proposal that was brought tonight. I'm actually in support of it, I think it's a great opportunity for our kids. But in order for things to be viewed as fair and equitable, when we give community members 48 hours' notice on a topic that is really important and affects so many families, that's just all, that provides a hardship for some people who can't come and not have a live televised meeting. So I think that if in the future, there are things that are viewed as high priority, or that would elicit a really strong public response, that maybe they could be, when the meeting is scheduled at town hall and it's a live meeting, or people are given more than the 48 hours' notice. I noticed for the facilities conversation, those folks have had a couple of days, and you pushed back that decision to the next meeting, and it just got me thinking that that equitable, it's equitable to do that when you're, have that decision to make, that you give people a little more time. Not necessarily to give their response, their opinion, but to come to the meeting and feel like they're on the same page. So, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, Peter Beer, go on. I echo her comments entirely, and I want to encourage you, now that you've reorganized and begun a new electoral year, to revisit your public comment policy, and give it some good consideration about what is adequate time for public comment. And I think it needs a fair and open discussion. It needs to be more flexible than it currently is. Case in point, the conversation that you just had, relative to athletic fees. Had you opened up public comment, some folks in the room might have had some information that your athletic director and your principals who were sharing incorrect information with you about the current reduced lunch schedule, could have enlightened you and you could have landed an actual number. The actual reduced lunch rate in town of Ludenberg, as I read the policy, as those are sitting here under Dr. Burnham's hand, is 40 cents. The full rate at the middle, at the elementary school and the primary school is $250, the full rate at the middle and high school is $30. That equates to about a 13% cost, which applied to $250. If you were to apply that proportionally, it would be $33.33, which is substantially less than 125, which is the arbitrary number that was arrived at earlier. So I'm not exactly sure how you're sliding scale language plans there, but again, had you taken public comment, we perhaps could have landed a better, more specific policy. And that's just one example. Thank you.
Tony Roy, and I guess I just have a question for Dr. Burnham. If the idea that this is self-funding, but the hope is that it's going to get back on the budget, and that it is going to be funded for middle school athletics, when are you hoping to do that? When are you reasonably thinking this is going to go back into the budget?
I really can't answer that question.
And I guess that would be my point, is a lot of times when we ask fees with the idea, okay, it's self-funded, you know, we feel that this should be in the budget, but we can't right now, but we're going to hope for it, it's very rare that we're going to come back to that. Yes, we did do that with John Londa, and we looked at some of those fees, so yes, I do think it's possible, but I do think we have to be careful before we just throw on fees, because once they're there, it's going to be really hard to back them up. Just point of clarification with what Bono said, he said double per track, it's actually quadruple. It's currently 50, so 200 would be quadruple. And I totally agree with the middle school athletic program. I totally support this program, and I think it's very necessary, I agree with basketball and everything. Those are new. Cross-country and track have been there this whole time, they have been growing. So we have the numbers for those, and I didn't see that. I would think anytime we're going to add a $200 fee or any kind of fee, we would look at the justification for the numbers. I think John Londa did that with the facilities, and wrote it down for a spreadsheet group. We haven't seen those numbers, and I would like to see those numbers, so that we understand what that fee is based on. We hear transportation, I also feel that some of the sports have different fees than others, or different needs financially than others, and so maybe we could look at different rates for different sports. I know Leinster does 50 and 25 for cross-country, because the financial needs across country are very minimal compared to some the other way. They don't carry the same equipment, the school doesn't need to have lacrosse sticks or, I'm not sure what it all is. Again, without seeing the numbers, it's hard to speak to that. So I think as you guys, you're running a big business here with the schools, you want to see the numbers. You want to see a spreadsheet, a breakdown of why are we getting to these numbers? What do these programs cost? What are we expecting them to cost? To me, hearing a number like 200 and not having those numbers provided to us, it's hard to know and understand where that's coming from. So, yeah. And I guess I do want to speak to the public comment, too. I felt like that was very restrictive, to only have 10 minutes, and I think that might be a really good thing for you guys to look at, just that there was someone who wanted to speak, or even opening it up midway. I know Sleffman had done it, I don't think it's unusual to allow public comment, especially in the moment. You know, people forget stuff later, it's sometimes good for that conversation. It would protect Bono from maybe having to stay the whole time, because we could have that conversation in the moment. Just a thought, but you guys are doing a great job, thank you for everything.
Do we have any more public comment? No? Okay, I don't think we have any report, do we have reports? Do you have a report?
We need to go back to-
Oh, we need to go back? Oh, okay.
Proposal now. I guess the only public comment I have is that we weren't conducting a public hearing.
Right.
Which we would solicit the input from members of the audience or the public.
Public comment is just, it's not dialogue.
Right, and so maybe something to think about when we have a topic like this, that maybe we look at public hearing as an option, so that we can have that dialogue, as opposed to, you know, where it's our working meeting that the public's invited to.
Right. Right, which is the context that people forget.
Public hearing, a topic, and I think some of these things might actually warrant more public input, which is kind of why I asked to hold this one off.
Well, then, perhaps then we're having a public hearing before, prior to a meeting on something like that, say for, you know what I mean, for, at 6:00 PM, before the start of the meeting, because sometimes when you look at an agenda, it's not, I mean, we could be here till midnight.
Right.
Which obviously doesn't work. So if we're going to look at public hearing on particular items, then maybe it needs to be, say, the 60 minutes prior at 6:00 PM, or something in that genre.
That can be a topic during our workshop meeting in July.
It can.
Absolutely.
That's what the workshop meeting is for.
Because sometimes floating it all in what the agenda is, or when things need action, doesn't necessarily fall to be at the first meeting of the month. So from a timing perspective, that always doesn't happen, so how do we address that?
Well, add it to our, workshop to the scout.
Yep.
So, thank you. So relative to the middle school athletics, I'm still of the opinion that I would like to hold off on that vote until we have a little more information next. I would, as was mentioned, appreciate kind of a breakdown of what is associated with, how we arrived at 200. We understand transportation's going to be a big part of that, field officials we've talked about, coaching staff. Just having some kind of a breakdown might be helpful.
Okay.
So I would, I'd move that we table this until next session.
And I just want to make sure that, okay, so then if he comes back to us with the number 200 and we don't find it sufficient, then we're taking middle school athletics off the table. Is that correct?
If 200 is not sufficient?
Like if he says that's what we need to have a self-sustaining program, but we decide that's too much money to charge, then we're taking it off the table for middle school students?
Well, I mean, right now, it's a proposal, so either we vote yea or nay, right?
Yes. I just want to make that-
Either, right.
Yes, we're either approving it-
Either way, we're going to vote up or down.
Right, with the $200 proposal, correct.
Correct.
Because as it is, June 5th is pushing it, and that was pretty clear.
Right.
So that's already, we're-
We're pushing.
We're pushing it.
Okay, so it's either, it's not, it's going to either go yes or no at the next meeting.
This is my opinion.
Yeah, after he gets-
We've got four people here. He's going to change, change the reduced rate.
That's the, that's a different, no, that's a different proposal.
That goes on high school.
This is the middle school athletic-
I mean, it would apply for, well, middle school athletics actually doesn't, so-
It's a totally different proposal, we already approved the other one. This is the middle school proposal.
So that's my one opinion, I have not-
Correct, I'm just, I'm just saying, to make it clear, to, if we vote no, that means there's no middle school athletic program.
I think it's important to have a middle school athletic program.
I'm just-
Right now, we have to fund it with the fees. Hopefully, we can get the public more involved and-
Right.
And try to get the funding for next year, to try to decrease these fees.
But keeping in mind, I'll be honest, next year is super aggressive. Look at our, look at our, the next several years is super aggressive. Lacrosse was five years-
This is not a priority for in the budget.
And that was a push in five years. Looking at how tight our budget is and what our buildings need from the, from an academic perspective.
And what we had to cut.
Looking at what's cut and what we still need and identified future needs.
So I get that you want to see what the figure is for and what the breakdown will be, I understand that, but I'm just, I think that this is probably a non-negotiable number. So when he comes back to us with what it's going to be for, we have to be ready to say, okay, we're either in agreement that it's going to be $200 to have a self-sustaining middle school program for these athletics, or no, we don't agree at all, and then we're taking them off the table.
Okay.
Okay, just want, okay.
He's, you're still here.
Right.
So do you have a breakdown of the 200 estimate?
I, was there a spreadsheet that-
There should be something in there.
Yes, yes.
Did I miss something? If I missed something, I apologize for dragging this out. MS Athletics Cost.
Yep, Proposal Costs. So, okay, the breakdown, it's on a spreadsheet, girls and boys cross-country, grade six through eight, transportation $2,000, uniforms $1,000, officials $780, equipment and supplies $500, coaches $2,400, total $7,680. Middle school basketball, boys and girls, seven and eight, seventh through eighth grade, $3,000 transportation, $2,000 uniforms, officials are 1536, supplies and equipment are $5,000, coaches are 2,400, the total is $9,436. Track and field, boys and girls, $2,000 transportation costs, 500 in uniforms, officials are 720, equipment and supplies are 1,500, coaches are 3,600, the total is $8,320,000, a total of $32,931.
It's important to note, too, to the public, that the total prices are very similar, and that track or cross-country actually isn't much lower than the other schools.
Right, correct, correct.
And at the high school level, it is one base athletic fee, and for the same thing, sports that may require a little more equipment-wise.
Or coaching and-
Right, right, additional coaches.
With field hockey, the supplies, the supplies are not, sticks, shin guards, all of that is supplies by the girl, their individual equipment that they purchase on their own, just like lacrosse, all of those, their equipment is their equipment, that's not purchased by the school at all, it is purchased by the student and their family to play the high school sport that they play. The school doesn't supply those, that equipment.
Could you run it over?
Yes, come up, please.
So, hi, James, I'm Dr. J. The equipment and supplies line for the track and cross-country, that number is bigger because they will now be able to participate in invitational meets where they wouldn't before. So for invitational meet, you have to pay an individual fee per athlete. So that is now going to be incurred with that, so-
Yeah, that was in their summary.
It could be in a separate tab, but it just falls under, like, that's part of their supplies. In addition to that, aside from their everyday sports supplies, one of the biggest things that I came across this fall and did right away was provide every athletic team a first aid kit, and made sure we had, we were compliant with the Mass State law of having a portable AED within two minutes of an athletic event. These new teams will require first aid equipment and the purchase of additional portable AEDs, where I no longer am able to get a discount of $800, they're now $1,600 plus. So that the, yes, and those, that equipment does carry over from sport to sport, but additional things will need to be purchased.
Do you have rough numbers of the participants for each of the four teams?
There's no, there's no basketball, so there's, I'm basing it off of having rosters of 15 and 15.
Thank you. And any other sports?
Depending on track, there could be, like, right now, Altoria has 64 students participating. That number could change, because someone in eighth grade could participate on the high school team.
I guess just in regards to the middle school, what do you expect?
Well, it's 64 right now.
It's 64 right now, so I, so-
And cross-country and field hockey?
Field hockey last year had 32, and cross-country was in, either it was high 40s or right on the 50.
Thank you.
It's in the 160 ballpark for all athletes.
Right.
And if you-
After dividing this number-
If you divide that number, that's pretty-
164.
Huh, right. So if you divide 30, 32, 9, 31 by 200, 164.
And then you've got seven free and reduced.
Yeah, you have to cover the free and reduced lunch.
So-
And cross-country was in, either it was high 40s or right underneath 50.
Thank you.
It's in the 160 ballpark for all athletes.
Right.
And if you.
And so dividing this number.
If you divide that number, that's pretty.
164.
Huh, right. So if you died 32, 931 by 200, 164.
And then you've got seven free and reduced.
Yeah, you have to cover the free and reduced lunch.
So. All right.
It's self-sustaining.
I will change my, my opinion.
Okay.
And recommend approval. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you for sharing that and.
Thanks. Okay.
Don't know how I missed that.
All right. Just.
I think the public sometimes doesn't see the data, too.
Well, I, yeah.
Well, and having, having the explanation of the data.
Okay. So then.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. No charter review.
Charter review, we're done.
Athletic advisory?
Athletic advisory. One person showed up.
What?
Me on the last, I thought, because advisory.
Was there a game?
I don't know what it was, but.
Well, it actually rained that night.
Oh.
It did rain that night. And, and one.
I was late getting.
One person showed up.
Was it James?
No, he, I left before he showed up. I waited 15 or 20 minutes with the one person. And so we've rescheduled to the first Tuesday, Brian, of the month.
June 4th.
30, I believe it is.
That is June 4th.
And it's in the, it's the other, other room, right? It's not in this one, it's in the other one.
Well, it was usually in this room.
Oh, is it?
But because they had MCAS, we had to go to the.
Oh, okay.
Lunchroom over here. But I will send you the information this week. I will attend that first meeting to kind of introduce.
Transition.
Transition.
Okay.
Trying to do a decent transition.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm sticking around. So you can always ask if you need any historical information. Plus, I've got all the, everything in the Google Drive folder I can share with you. Thank you.
Okay. Athletic advisory done. Finance committee, she's not here. Blizzard bag's done. Wellness, Wendy.
I'm pulling up my notes. Can we come back to it?
Yeah, policy subcommittee.
It was on my phone that I shut up.
All the policies were on the agenda for today. We pulled the one and you have to set up a new meeting with your newest member. Right? PTO, I don't know, because that was Meredith.
So they have not, they have had a meeting since our last meeting.
Yeah, so I think that the next one, maybe it's elections. I don't know. And then elections, when, I don't know. You know what? I'll find out. I'll reach out to Allison and find out their calendar and what's going on. School councils, did you have any meetings?
Nothing.
No, okay.
I've got wellness one already.
Well, let's skip over Capitol planning because there hasn't been any meetings. So that's done, too, for the, for now.
So at wellness, final version of our wellness survey. And a memo went to Superintendent Burnham as required by wellness policy. Year in review. We just talked about meetings, upcoming topics for discussion. And then the break free from depression curriculum for eighth grade. That was the other part of our discussion. And breakfast piloted at the middle school. And now the food service department will offer breakfast with, with all schools and the cost will be $1.50. I'm not sure on the primary. I believe it's the, it's Turkey Hill and the middle high school now for that at $1.50. And then free and reduced rates do apply.
So I'll be looking to bring that as a formal proposal.
It was successful.
Yeah, it was, sure. But they're still working out some kinks for primary. It's not out, it just, they're not, it's not ready to go yet.
And then we're going to roll out.
All right, fine. We are on to topics for future discussion. We are moving. What were we putting on there? Town meeting.
Special town meeting.
Special town meeting.
Special town meeting and fundraising.
That's on there already.
Yes.
Actually, a policy just in general for the auditorium?
Yeah.
Should we do that?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have a policy in place for the auditorium. However, they ask us to make a special contingency for the adults to go in there and then spill their stuff. So.
Their sticky lattes.
Yeah, their sticky lattes, whatever they brought in for the dunks.
I think there were some extenuating circumstances as we talked about at this meeting. That's not every.
It is every year.
Well, it is every year, but this year it was, it was said. People felt they really couldn't and shouldn't leave.
Well, that's not how they should be.
I didn't say it was. I did not say it was, however.
That's not us.
No, it's not. And that's why if we share this with everyone in advance, then the, then the expectation should be clear, so.
There were a lot of, quote, controversial items.
Well, yeah.
Citizens petitions that people stuck around for.
I know. So there was something else, though. What was it? Well, no, it wasn't middle school athletics, so.
Oh, it was the workshop.
Workshop dates. So Liz is going to send everyone an email to get dates in July, find out when everyone's going on vacation so that we can schedule a meeting. It might have to be like not on a Wednesday, maybe, that, that one because of schedules when people are traveling.
Absolutely.
So we're just going to have to figure out a date. And we're going to have Dorothy from the, again, come in to facilitate it.
Okay.
Okay? So it should be really, really good.
It should be productive.
Yeah, last time it was great. So think of anything that you want to bring to the table for that meeting as well. What was it, though, that we were going to bring to that workshop?
We were going to, talking about a way to look at information dissemination potentially and.
Oh, before 28 hours.
Before 48 hours.
Yeah.
Although we don't get some of the information as the school committee. Some of it, whether, whether it's high priority or high potential interest or not, isn't always out there.
In our folder.
And when we're able to, we can do it for the next meeting, but if it's a time sensitive issue.
Right, it's, right. And honestly, if something is bigger, this is a good chunk of the time that there's a time sensitivity to it. Not all of it. Sometimes it's just initial discussions, but yeah.
And people do email with concerns or support for something that goes out.
I think the other topic for the workshop was public hearing.
Oh, versus public meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, public hearing versus public meeting because I still think that people are misinformed and they think that this, that when they come and they sit at public comment, they're looking for us to respond.
They 100% are.
And we're not going to. It's just public comment. We're not having a discussion.
To the point where the prior.
And I think the policy.
Maybe have more public input as we're talking about some of the topics. And that's, that's where we talked about, mostly bringing public hearing.
Right, that's totally different, yeah.
But from, from a basic agenda, meeting to meeting, it is not a public hearing. And I think that's really hard for folks to understand.
And everything shouldn't be a public hearing.
Correct.
Okay, and we can't keep like saying, okay, everything should be a public hearing.
Part of the issue in 1505 is that that facilitates that thought.
Right.
That everything is a discussion and give and take. So perhaps we need to look at verbiage in that to achieve what we're looking for, but not convey that message.
Not convey the message that we're shutting you out.
Right.
Because that is not the intent.
No, it's, no, it's not, but that not every part of our meeting is a discussion back and forth.
Right, and it's not unless it's a public hearing.
Right.
And we'll get to work on that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Motion.
I make a move motion that we adjourn at 9:59 PM.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Welcome.